Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting. Oops, over here.
The Villa Park City Council. I hereby call the meeting to order. Jared, roll call please.
Yes, thinking Madam Mayor. Councilman Barnett.
Present.
Councilman Colacott.
Here.
Councilman Nelson.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Mills.
Here.
Mayor Fasenelli.
Present. All right, today I will ask Mayor Pro Tem Mills to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
All rise please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We welcome you to our monthly meeting here and if you wish to address the council, if you kindly fill out a speaker card in the back, it will assist me in bringing up public comment after we have our presentations. At this time, I'd like you to turn off your cell phones, if you would please, and your beepers if you have it. And we have a presentation from our Orange County Sheriff, Sandra Hutchins. Thank you and welcome.
Thank you and thank you to all council members for allowing me time to speak to you this evening. I was asked to speak about, more broadly, about crime issues, not necessarily, I will bring it down to the city here, but I wanted to talk about some things that I see out there. I'm both a member of Cal State Sheriff's Association and Major County Sheriff's Association, so I go to meetings and hear about the problems throughout the state in terms of crime issues and also across the nation. And so I'm happy to report, despite what you hear out there about some impacts, about legisla- some legislation and kind of a backlash, if you will, on law enforcement and law enforcement practices in some communities, I don't find that to be the case here in Orange County. I don't, and I don't find a, there are, have been some increases in crime rate, certainly not dramatic here in Villa Park, but in some other communities in the county, but certainly not as dramatic as we're seeing in other areas such as in Los Angeles and across the nation. So I wanted to just put that in a little bit of perspective. And I also wanted to talk about something near and dear to my heart that I think impacts crime in every community, and that is drug use. And we are seeing an increase in drug use across the nation, in particular heroin. And it's something that we've seen in Orange County, not as dramatically as other areas of the country, but we are seeing kind of a shift from people who get addicted to prescription medications. The medical community has become more restrictive in how they dispense those medications. They're more careful about how many they give out because they're very addictive. They want to still give them to people who are in pain, but at the same time, prevent people from becoming addicted. When they become addicted to codeine or some of the others, Vicodin, those kinds of pain medications, when the person can no longer either find it in a medicine cabinet or no longer afford to buy it on the street, they will resort to buying heroin because heroin is much cheaper. So we think that's why we're seeing an increase, so much so that we have just worked with the county healthcare agency to have our deputies trained to administer naloxone, which is a spray, a nasal spray that will counteract an overdose. Because that's how strongly I feel about, you know, if we come on scene to someone who's having an overdose. And we're finding our younger people are using it. When I started in law enforcement 37 years ago, heroin addict was someone who was usually 30, 40 years old, usually destitute, living in, you know, an abandoned house. And that was a heroin, that was the stereotypical heroin user. Today, we have young men and women using heroin, which is very, very unusual. And again, I think it's, and what you hear from DEA, the Drug Enforcement Administration, across the nation, this is a trend. So I wanted to make sure that you were aware of it. In fact, a good source of information on drug trends, and it's very important for the community to know that because we see the trends in our schools, right, with our young folks. And I have been an advocate of drug education because it's so much easier if we can keep somebody off drugs in the beginning as opposed to trying to get the 40-something-year-old off drugs that ends up in our jails. That's a much harder, that's a much harder road to go. So I think money is well-spent in our schools by educating not just our students, but our parents in drug education. I just pulled this off the DEA website. You've heard of Molly, some of these synthetic drugs. And you may ask yourself, well, why are kids able to buy these things? And we have people who formulate these designer drugs, they're called, and by changing one chemical composition, they fall outside the statute that makes it a controlled substance. So DEA and Federal Drug Administration is constantly trying to keep up with the new designer drugs. So I wanted to just read this to you, if you'll indulge me for a moment, off the DEA website. This is an activity they just took October 15th. "The DEA, Immigration and Customs Enforcement, Homeland Security Investigations, Customs and Border Patrol Protection, along with other federal, state and local law enforcement, today concluded a 15-month nationwide drug interdiction effort that resulted in 151 arrests in 16 states. The enforcement action known as Project Synergy III targeted the synthetic designer drug industry, including wholesalers, money launderers and other criminal facilitators. In addition to curbing the flow of synthetic drugs into the country, Project Synergy III continues to reveal the flow of millions of dollars in US synthetic drug proceeds to countries of concern in the Middle East." So you can see the problem we have here. It's very serious. When I say "here," I don't mean here in Orange County, but we certainly have kids who use designer drugs in Orange County. And we are the gateway to the border, we are the gateway to the drugs flowing into this country. And so that's why it's so important, I think, for us to commit resources to that, and we do. But again, the education is important. And all those agencies I mentioned, we work with all of those agencies here locally. Again, if you look at a map across the United States, you'll see clusters in the Midwest, you'll see clusters on the East Coast, you'll see clusters Northern California up through Washington. We do, I'm not saying we don't have a problem here in Southern California, we do, but it's not to the extent that it is in some areas of the country, but we certainly don't want it to get there. And so that's why I think it's important that we continue to get the message out. We have deputy sheriffs, and I'm sure you're, the folks that work, our school resource officers that do, you know, are part of this effort where they take items off school campuses, paraphernalia, and they have a table to show all the parents what they took off the schoolchildren during that time to, again, educate the parents. I go to those meetings from time to time, and I'm here to tell you, I learn something new every time I go. Because there's always some new substance out there that someone is trying to sell to our kids that is harmful to them. So I just wanted to let you know a little bit about that. I was asked to talk about Prop 47. And Prop 47 is the law that was passed that decriminalized some narcotics offenses and also some theft offenses. And so, once that went into effect, it wasn't just for new offenses, it was also retroactive. So cases of people who had been convicted, say, for possession of cocaine, where it was a felony, the case was reviewed to see if now it qualified under the new statute as a misdemeanor. What you've probably heard is concerns on both sides. You've heard one side say, "Well, this is going to decriminalize and it's going to empty out our prisons and our jails." And then on the other side, you've heard that, "Well, crime is going to increase." And I would say, I would weigh in and say it's a little early to tell. I would say, though anecdotally, my concern is the fact that we stop a drug addict who has a pocketful of heroin or cocaine, and we take that away from them and we write them a citation to appear and we allow them to go on their way, they're going to have to do something to get more drugs because they're drug addicted. And it's very hard, one thing I know for sure from my years in working in the jail and on the streets, it's very difficult for people to get off drugs once they're on drugs. There was a judge, there's a judge in the county who is on our Drug Use is Life Abuse Board, a number of individuals from the community that donate their time and money to helping us fight this. And he tells the story of young people coming in, young adults coming into his courtroom. Prior to Prop 47, we had something called Prop 36. And if you remember, Prop 36 was designed to get drug users, first-time offenders, second, maybe third-time offenders, agree to go into a program in lieu of going to jail or in lieu of having arrests on their record. And so we did kind of have this, you know, carrot and stick approach to getting people to get into programs. But he would talk of the frustration of seeing the young people come back into his courtroom time after time, being given choices time and time again. We are seeing, I'm told, in our collaborative courts, that is the Drug Court, Veterans Court, these kind of diversion programs. Now that people are getting citations and not having to, you know, not coming into jail, we have fewer people going in voluntarily into those programs, which I think is too bad because I think they were effective for those people that would participate. And that is definitely the goal. I came across this article that I thought you might be interested in. It was written by Heather McDonald, who works for the Manhattan Institute. And she wrote a, she, it really is an article against Prop 47. It's called "The Decriminalization Fusion." It's not just Prop 47, though. It's "Who's in Prison?" If you hear "who's in prison," you get the impression that the people that are in state prison or in county jail are there for possession of marijuana or possession of a drug. Particularly in federal prison, you've heard about a number of individuals that are being looked at to be released from federal prison. Well, I thought her statistics were interesting because the makeup in a state facility, inmates in state facilities make up 87% of our nation's prisoner population, 87% in state prison alone. Of that total number, 16% are drug offenders. Surprising, huh? It doesn't mean that other people that are in there have not committed a drug offense, but the current is 16%, lower, I think, than what we're really hearing out there. 54% are violent felons, 19% are property offenders, 11% are other. So I just wanted to make the, make sure that you knew, it's not a large, it's numbers, you might think or hear about that. And then the other thing to bring it home a little bit here to Orange County, Heather, who I've met with and she's interviewed me a few times, talked to, she said, "The criminal world is well-versed in the new regime." Here's a quote. "Sure, I know about Prop 47," says Mitchell, "a 62-year-old vagrant hanging out in Santa Ana's perennial civic center homeless encampment." Mitchell, who sports sunglasses, cargo shorts and a ponytail, has spent 22 years in prison for 24 felony convictions, including for burglary and meth trafficking. "I've seen 47 in action," he says. "If someone has busted the police sight and released them right there. People, i.e. criminals, are getting a little sloppier. If it's a felony and I'm sitting there with the cops, I'm going to be a little nervous. Now it's just a ticket." Mitchell winces. "I think that's a little lax." This is from a criminal. "Theft should be serious," he says. "Even when theft was a felony, the system used discretion in prosecuting. If you got caught at Kmart," he says, "you're not going to do time for your first offense. If it's your second, maybe you'll do 30 days in jail. Now there's more dope flowing and the drug trade is picking up," Mitchell says. "There's more people on the street and it's fast living and a fast life." So that's from someone who has been in the criminal justice system and sees this. Now, I know Rob can get up here and talk about what your crime stats are, but he's given me a copy of it. So I will tell you, no. But the crime trends, I just, you've probably already seen this, the city of Villa Park five-year comparisons shows that it is the trend line down, which is good. And I hear that you have had some property crime issues. And I have heard about that that is being addressed. And I, again, will say what I say to every city council and I will say to my neighbors in my community. I had a neighbor who had an iPad, his son had an iPad stolen out of his car. He lives five down, five houses down from the sheriff. Doesn't make him immune from opportunity when you have your car unlocked and the window down, even if he was only gone for 15 minutes. Conversation about that. This might surprise you, but I've been the victim of burglary myself years ago, not where I live currently in Dana Point, another city. Part of it is, you know, certainly police, it's, you know, we need good policing. We need law enforcement officers that are out there patrolling the streets, paying attention, looking for suspicious activity. We need residents who are looking for something suspicious in their neighborhoods and calling us and reporting it, even though they think it might not be something. I think whatever you can do as a council to encourage people to call us, I hear too often, "I saw something unusual, but I didn't want to bother you guys." And I always say, "Please bother us, we want to be bothered. We want to know where we can go. We don't want to drive around there aimlessly. If there's somebody that doesn't belong in your neighborhood, you're going to know. I'm going to know if somebody doesn't belong in my neighborhood and believe me." And so that's part of it. So that's part of the, and then there's a personal responsibility about keeping your doors locked, taking steps to protect your property. I have even said, and I shouldn't say this, the alarm companies are going to get mad at me. If you can't afford to put an alarm system in, put the sign up. They don't know the difference. You know, whatever you can do to get them to move away from your property and move on to some other target is something that the public can easily do and it doesn't cost any money. So I've been talking for a long time. I could go on because I have a lot of material, but I really want to hear from you what's on your mind and answer any questions that you might have or concerns that you might have.
Well, thank you very much for that. What I did is I went to the community and I asked a variety of people to give me some questions. And I asked a variety of ages. So I went from the young family to a little bit older to a lot older to see what kind of concerns they had, if they were going to ask you directly. And it was interesting, the type of questions that you can see. So from the family members that have children that are young, their questions are, were more local. "What can you do about sober living homes coming into our city? What can you do about, we have traffic around our schools and how are you going to address that because we have safety issues and they're not following the law?" So that's coming, that, those type of questions are coming from a family going to the schools if you'd like to address that as to how the Sheriff Department can work with that.
Absolutely, thank you. I will say, and I have worked in many cities throughout my career, and there's not a single city that that has not been an issue. Certainly when school starts, it's a concern about traffic flow, traffic issues, people driving too fast. And I shared with the mayor in a conversation that typically the first people that get stopped are the ones that made the complaints in the beginning because they were going too fast or whatever. It really helps to have, what I've found, and I'm sure occurs here, is for the, for law enforcement to have a plan with the school, work directly with the school administration to ensure a good traffic flow and to do some enforcement. Typically, once some enforcement has been done, people realize, okay, the sheriff's going to be out here writing people tickets, I better, you know, I better drive slow. But having that good traffic pattern, working with the school administration, having it flow easily, making the drop-offs easier for families. I know where I live, there's a Catholic school at the top of the hill and if I don't time it just right, I'm going to be stuck there a long time because they're racing up there to drop off their kids because they're busy on their way to going to work. So my neighborhood as well. So it's just something that occurs. It's something that if we jump on it, unfortunately, a few people are going to have to get citations. But that's how we'll do with that. Sober living homes is, you know, I had one, we had one in our neighborhood and it always creates some concern. But I do say, and I'm not, you know, trying to suggest to the city what you do, but I know, like in Dana Point, we have a, you know, like many cities, we have a homeless problem. And so one of the whole ideas about sober living homes is to get people off the street and get them well. But there, I understand that there's concern. There's always going to be concern when you have sober living home in your neighborhood and who's going to be there, who's, you know, is there going to be crime around that area? And I would say that, you know, that's something that law enforcement, I mean, we could certainly keep an eye on it. But I like to say, yes, there are concerns about sober living homes, but they're in our communities now. You know, and I don't know about Villa Park in terms of a homeless issue. You probably don't have a homeless issue here. But in those areas, you know, they're there now. So it's like anything else. It's something that we need to pay attention to. If there's complaints about people coming, you know, coming there, if they see problems, again, it goes back to calling us if you see something suspicious and we can find out if everything is okay, if things are going well.
So I'm going to move on then to a little bit older. And their concern was with Halloween coming up. We have, if we have sexual offenders and how they're handled because they shouldn't be trick-or-treating. This was a question that came up. Let me get, that was one of them, and if you'll excuse me, that we did it the new way, with the electronic way when they sent it to me. The other issue was undesirables entering our city. You know, how, what does the Sheriff Department do when they see someone who they think doesn't belong? Do they do that? Do they profile people who don't belong in our city?
Well, we don't profile. You know, we go off of, you know, if we see a violation, you know, or if we get that call that someone doesn't look like they belong here. I mean, we can't just stop people for no reason. There has to be some reason, some reasonable suspicion. So we certainly would probably not recognize where someone, you know, lived in the city or not. But certainly if they're exhibiting some kind of strange behavior, some driving erratically, for example, or sitting in the neighborhood for an extended period of time with really, you know, no apparent business there, you know, that's a reasonable suspicion and would allow us to go and ask some questions. But yeah, we can't, you know, just because someone is driving into the city, they might be coming to visit the mayor. We can't do that. Now, Halloween, well, let me address the sex offender, registered sex offenders. And just let you know that we have a unit that works countywide where we keep tabs on where the registered sex offenders are. We know where they're at. We want to make sure that they're where they say they're living because this may surprise you, some of them move and don't tell us. And we want to know about that. So we do keep good track of them. On Halloween, they, if they're, they are, they know that they cannot have trick-or-treaters at their house. They're supposed to put out any kind of decorations or any enticements that would entice children. And parole, if they're on parole or probation, I can tell you that that's a time of year when they're paying very close attention to what the registered sex offenders are doing. And the important thing is, you know where they're at in the community. We don't have our children go to those homes. Yeah, being aware is so important, just being aware is power.
Okay. And lastly, moved on to residents that have been here, maybe almost from the inception of our city, which is important. And they're, they certainly look at the dollar amount that we pay for the Sheriff Department, about 1.3 million, which is a lot of money for our budget. I mean, we've got almost 48%, I think, of our budget goes towards that. And in doing that, some feel that maybe we should have more services or that the crime that we have is not acceptable. They're looking for a zero crime. And I know that's difficult, but the question came up. So how do you explain for us to be able to achieve a zero crime rate here for the 1.3 million we pay you?
I wish.
Or the department.
I wish we could achieve a zero crime rate, but I will tell you, one of the, I don't even want to call it a downside. One of the outcomes of living in a free society is that we will have crime. You know, we really would like, you know, I think a lot of us, and I include myself in that, I don't like to think about crime when I'm at home. I don't want to think about someone breaking into my home or into my car or my belongings. However, it's a reality for us in America. We are going to have some level of crime. We want to keep that crime as low as possible. We want to work strategically with the community to make sure we get the number as low as we can. I cannot promise zero crime because people commit crimes. They look for opportunities to commit crimes. So our job collectively, law enforcement and as a community and all the first responders, is to work together to keep that number as low as we can. And again, it goes back to that, you know, the community responsibility, the law enforcement's responsibility. We have to work together on that to keep it low. But I don't know that we'd ever get, unfortunately, to zero. On the cost of the contract, I know that is a concern, of course. It's an expense for the city. But I would like the residents to know that by law, we cannot make a profit. It's only cost covered, it's only the cost that we incur. We do what we can to keep those costs down. Salaries and benefits are the largest portion of that contract. And I don't make the decision on when deputies get a raise or what their benefits are, but I will tell you, I did support the raise that they got this last time. We, deputy sheriffs are, when you look at the other agencies in Orange County, we're at the bottom third in terms of pay and benefits. So I have to make sure that my department is competitive, particularly with the Orange County agencies, in terms of our ability to recruit and retain. And we want the best, you know, we don't want second-rate officers. We want the best. I think we have the best. But that is, you know, that's, that would be a reason why I would definitely, you know, why I started it and I'll stand up here and tell you. And that was a big reason why there was an increase. But again, we're competing with other Orange County agencies. I have to tell you, someone could, I could train somebody in our academy. They can graduate and another agency can decide to hire them. So, you know, and I've paid for all the training and all of that. So we, so that's what I'm talking about in terms of, we don't have that happen a lot. But I think if that number became, the gap became too large, we might have an issue. I think a lot of people come to work for Orange County Sheriff's Department because they like the idea of having the ability to work many different areas, being able to work in contract cities. You know, the jail, opportunities in other areas, you know. They, it's a large department with a lot of different opportunities, promotional opportunities. So, but we have to remain competitive. Yeah.
Thank you for that. We've spent a lot of time here as a city and as a council, this council as well as prior councils, talking about security cameras and license plate readers. Can you give us an overview of what you think as far as crime prevention? What would either of those do for us? And we're talking about crime prevention at this point.
Right. Well, license plate readers are in use in some parts of the county, but they're of, to me, they're of benefit in, on larger, you know, streets or... to me, they're of benefit, you know, on larger, you know, streets, or in a, in a community where you have a lot of crime. What we're really looking for on license plate readers are stolen vehicles, or someone, you know, a warrant is attached to that, that vehicle, using, you know, felony warrant we're more concerned about. And so, I'm not sure, I haven't looked at it here, but I'm not sure that I would recommend license plate readers in, in this community. Again, I think when we use in, in the high crime rate area, or in areas where there's a lot of vehicle traffic, like on the major roads, to me, makes a whole, whole lot more sense. There's a lot of controversy, there's people that don't like license plate readers because of the information that we, we store. Here in Orange County, all of the chiefs and myself, we have a policy, we did get some license plate readers in the county, and we, I think we store it for, I think it's two years, we store the information. And we store it because if there's a crime that is committed in an area, and we can go back and look at the vehicles in that area to determine if we have a suspect vehicle. We're not storing it for any other purpose, to look at and see who was where, what, you know, only if a crime is involved would we ever look at that. Or if they got an immediate answer, you know, the thing goes off when you have a stolen vehicle in front of you, you get alerted. So, that's what they're used, that, that's the use I would recommend.
Well, that's, that's great. What about security cameras as far as a city-wide? I mean, you have, you know, England who has, you know, you can't move because every single move that you make has, you know, you're on camera there.
Yeah.
You know, we don't have cities' cameras here in our city. But would that assist us also? I don't know if it would or not.
Well, I mean, it could conceivably, you know, solve a crime, but again, that's a very controversial issue. Do you want cameras all throughout your city? You know, that's a concern that I think, it's a privacy concern for some. I was in Monaco where they have cameras everywhere, literally everywhere throughout the country. I, I will tell you, and it might help as you discuss this issue, that there already are a lot of cameras out there. You know, we, I'm amazed at how many cameras, but when we have a crime that occurs, we can get, most businesses have cameras. And now you're going to have, at some point, we're going to have our body worn cameras, we're field testing body worn cameras, you know, for our police officers, for our deputy sheriffs. But there are a lot of commercial cameras available to us out there, you know. So, it's really a question, it's really a debate for the city. I mean, could it solve a crime? Yes, but do, you know, do you want to give up a level of privacy? It's kind of a balancing test, I think, for a community. And I think it's for that community to decide. Again, you know, this is not a high crime rate area, but, you know, but it's just not. So, I don't know, but Monaco isn't either. But I don't know if that's because they have the cameras, or it's Monaco.
I think so, they all carry guns. Council, you'd like to address the sheriff?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. I, we discussed before your presentation a little bit about our law enforcement advisory committee, and I wanted to compliment Rob for his participation. He's not, doesn't just attend the meetings, but he's a very active participant and leader. And he's actually helped us to develop some, some concepts, like the, we're getting a couple of used patrol vehicles to support the PSR program that he's helping us to get implemented and some other initiatives. But anyway, he's a great guy to work with, and he's been a real helpful on our committee. And we're trying to get, we do want to achieve zero crime. I know that's a elusive goal, but that's our goal, anyway.
It's okay to have that goal. I, yeah, it's okay. It gets us closer to it, that's it, yeah.
Part of our law enforcement advisory committee includes leaders of our Neighborhood Watch program, which is very active in Villa Park. And we have, now have 125, I understand, block captains in our little town, two-square-mile town. What are your thoughts about Neighborhood Watch?
I think it's fantastic if you can keep it going. What I see too often, Neighborhood Watch typically starts after there's been some crime in a neighborhood, and everybody's engaged. And then when things get better, because everybody's engaged in calling us when they see something, and sharing with their neighbors when they're going on vacation, and those kinds of things, it kind of falls apart. I hope that's not the case here. It sounds like you've got a very robust program, if you've got that many people involved. But I think the challenge is to keep them interested, to keep them involved. And I, Neighborhood Watch is wonderful. Everywhere there's Neighborhood Watch, you're going to see crime go down, so that might get you closer to the zero.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But no, I think very highly of Neighborhood Watch.
We've already experienced that cycle.
Yeah.
And I do have one observation I'd like to make. With regard to the costs and the pension benefit issues, I don't disagree with you, with what you said. I'm on the fire authority board of directors. So, I don't disagree, and I understand, and I understand your stance, but I, I would warn or admonish you, whatever, that the, the government sector, and particularly the first responder group, has created a kind of an oasis in the employment arena, and they, they are competing with one another, and they are accelerating so far out of the, the general market, that it, it's become somewhat of an anomaly. And as you're aware, as well as I, that the, the benefits system, the pension package and the, and the health costs are out of control, the benefits, the deficits on a statewide basis are, have gone crazy. I frankly, don't know how they're going to ever resolve that the deficit can be created. I think we're a billion dollars or more just at OCFA in pension and health benefits. So, I, I would just like to throw this out there to make everybody aware. While I understand your position completely, and I've heard those arguments many times, this system just keeps feeding on itself. And your increase, we will now see as they got an increase, and it'll come back to us. And it goes back and forth, and then police will say, hey, fire's getting, they got more than we do, even though they didn't get a big increase. And it just keeps feeding, and it's gone beyond the public's capacity to pay. And I know what I, what I don't see much of, and nobody wants to address, and our own people at fire, who I really like, you know, have admonished me, gosh, Rick, if you do that, I mean, you know, we'll look out of control here, is if you compare it with the private sector, if you compare it with, I mean, we're in a free market system, if you compare it, you're going to find that some of these things are double, or better, what it is in the private sector. And, you know, at some point, it's got to stop, we've got to get a handle on it, and we've got to be able to balance these budgets, and stop the public from being exposed to these massive deficits. So, I just toss that out here. I know what you're going through, and I, I see it, and we're in negotiations as well. But sometimes you just gotta, you gotta put a cap on it. San Diego did it. San Diego got, actually got rid of their defined benefit plan, and, and they've got a bit of a handle on it, and San Jose's got a fight going. But I just throw that out there because I think it's crucially important. We've got multiple cities filing bankruptcies, and when they do, they don't generally deal with those definite, those benefit plans. They keep those in play, even though they're generally the primary reason for the filings, and they write off all the private sector financing, and they charge it off in the bankruptcy proceedings, which in many cases is maybe, maybe pension benefits here, but certainly private plan benefits. Those get charged off, that gives them a breathing spell, and they go right back to paying the defined benefit plans, and some of the agencies can be right back in bankruptcy again. So, not to beat it to death, but.
Well, yeah, and I would just like to, I, I don't have anything to do with pension decisions. That's done by other people. I, I think there's been a number of reforms, necessary reforms that have been brought forward. You know, I, again, I, I would just like to say this, you know, I think you make some valid points, but I, I, I think we have to be careful about, you know, you know, the employees came in and they accepted a package that was offered to them. And so, I think sometimes some anger is directed at our first responders, and they really accepted the terms of the employment. Did that come out of, did that get out of control? And I guess the future will be the judge of that. I think that there were some counties that took pension holidays, as I'm sure you're well aware, when things were going well, and the investments were going well, and it's kind of like when we thought, oh, our house, price of our house will always continue to go up. No, not always. If you stick around long enough, you know that that's, you know, not going to stay that way. But I think the same mindset was in that, you know, in the pension system at the time. So, so I think there have been some reforms. I think, you know, and I'm, I'm not an expert, but I think part of the difficulty is, kind of talked about, well, gee, would a young first responder coming in want more money in pocket now, today, when they're young, they want to buy a house, and maybe they have a decision to make on, do they want that or defined benefit, or, you know. There's a number of ways to look at this, but again, it's not my decision.
No, I, I understand.
But I understand.
And I'm not advocating.
But it does add to the cost, I know it's, it adds, I know your point, sir, it adds to the cost of, of the, of the services that we provide.
Yeah, I'm not advocating that we reneg on, on what's promised. The problem is, as you pointed out, they've lobbied the legislature, there's limited control over the pension benefits, the courts have stepped in. So, we only have limited control over certain aspects of it, but sometimes you've got to kind of put the freeze on it until maybe the, until somebody acts on the other side.
Thanks, Q.
Yeah, I have, I have one. You talked about crime and how crime has come down over five years in Villa Park, and I think that's because you provided us with an excellent police chief, and I want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
But my question is, I heard a statistic today, that the US has 5% of the population and 25% of incarcerated people. Do you have any idea why we incarcerate more people than anyone else in the world?
We, I was just reading an article, I got asked that question the, the other day, and I didn't have a, a good answer, but actually, the same article I read, Heather McDonald wrote, and she's kind of a criminal justice, you know, expert, she's been studying this a long time. She brought up the fact that, you know, we have more violent crime in America. And I, I'm not making a statement about guns up here, but, but that was her point. I, I'm not going to say that that's, you know, but we do have a lot of guns in wrong people's hands. It was funny, I, I attended a dinner, and there were Israeli police officers there and Israeli military, and they, they told me, we don't understand America's fascination with guns. They said, we, of course, if you go to Israel, everybody's got a gun because they're all in the military. So, I go, I'm thinking, well, you know, you kind of have a fascination, too. But guns, guns are part of our culture, I guess, but, but I, I think that we have, from what I've seen, other countries have experienced mentally ill mass murders, you know, we've, we've seen that. But, but I think we, we have many people who should not have guns, who are either criminals or, or who are mentally ill. And so, we have more violent crime. I think the gang activity adds to that in America. We don't have a huge problem with that here in Orange County, but certainly in the counties to the north, you know, and other areas of the country, Chicago, gang problems add to that, that crime. And of course, the narcotics trade, trafficking, people who are competitors are killing each other in the, in the drug trafficking trade. And as I said, we are, we're the superhighway from Mexico to bring in drugs into the country. So, I think those might be some of, some of the reasons why we have a higher incarceration rate. I, I think what we're doing now as a country is looking at that and saying, do we need to have mandatory minimums, or should that be the discretion of a judge? I mean, I think we're, it, it's healthy. Last time we really evaluated our criminal justice system, and no, I wasn't around then, I was 10, was 1965. We looked at the whole criminal justice system and did some reforms. Well, now we're doing it again. And so, you know, there's been a lot of talk about policing and, and what the police need to do, and what we have been saying, at least the, you know, national sheriffs and major county sheriffs, and major city chiefs had said, let's look at the whole system, and see what's, what's broken. Let's, let's see what we can fix, because it costs money to incarcerate people.
Yes.
But at the same time, there are some people that we need to keep out of the community because they're not going to follow the rules, and they're going to commit crimes, and we want to keep people safe. But there's a balance there, I think, and I think that's what we need to find. And, and hopefully, we'll put our heads together and see what we, what we can come up with. Because I, I'd rather be spending the money on the front end, keeping kids out of, you know, away from drugs, out of gangs, into healthy behavior, money well spent in as opposed to paying for someone to be in jail and paying for their medical costs, the community paying for that. So, there is a price there. I guess there's a price point we need to hit.
I just had a, a comment. I think what you said at the beginning of your, your address was, was very true with the Prop 47 issue, but you think that there's a lot more, you know, what we could do with changing the attitudes of, of the perpetrators here, with the drug problems, things like that, all those types of drug issues. And that, that I think is, is a very worldly way of looking at it. There's a lot of people probably in jail, to, to, in reference to Bill's question, that they really shouldn't be in jail, some, some of them, especially on the local level.
Yeah.
And if there's a way we could treat them and get them turned around, because I think you just said it, do it on the front end. And also, I'm, I'm very happy that you're starting to get a lot of cameras that are on body with the police officers. I think there's a lot, too much effort now that's being spent trying to protect the individual officers themselves from all this other extra added attention. It takes away, I would say, probably at least 10% of your effort, if not more, sometimes, than, than what you really need to, to expend.
Yeah, the deputies who have been field testing it like having the cameras. We are moving deliberately by field testing variety of cameras. This is still kind of new technology, and everybody tells you out there, every vendor will tell you, we've got the best product, but we want to get one that works, battery doesn't run down at the crucial moment when we should have the video, and the video storage, it's, that's what's cost us, storing, storing that for a period of time, because it is potentially evidence. And so, all of that is additional cost.
Somehow or another, yeah.
................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................ ...[1730.83]
they're trained to deal with this. So it's a challenge, it's a challenge for us, there's not a deputy sheriff, law enforcement officer that comes on and says, "Gee, I want to get an officer involved shooting someday." Unfortunately, it does, it is part of the job, we don't want, you know, to use deadly force, do everything up to that point, but unfortunately, there are situations where that is the decision that has to be made in a split second.
My key point, though, in the end, is that the reason for the cameras, I believe, is just going to help keep not only establish, but to continue the respect that you guys deserve.
And it keeps everybody honest, when you know you're on camera.
That's right.
Keeps everybody honest, and it's good, because what you see out there now, you're, you know, you're getting images from an iPhone, and you may not, you don't see the whole incident. It's like seeing a snapshot of what happened, and then the media runs with that sometimes, and it doesn't always tell the whole story. I'm not saying it never does, but it doesn't always tell the whole story. So I think the deputy sheriffs and officers having body worn cameras is a good idea.
Yeah. Thank you.
And I'd like to remind you that we already have, we have for years, had cameras in our cars, so we're one of the few agencies, I think maybe the only, I'm looking for Rob, the only agency in Orange County that has in-car cameras, and we've had those for years, and we do review those, but they're limited to the vision in front of the car. This will be, you know, from the officer dealing with the person.
But they also have recorders on them.
Yes.
Am I correct? Yeah, so everything is recorded. Well, I'm just gonna finalize what Greg here said, is when I call 911 and I ask you to come, I would like your officers to come with a gun, because I need help, and I can't take care of the situation. So, you know, I don't, yeah, I do not want you to come with, you know, a puffball to try and get rid of them. So, I'd like to thank you.
Thank you.
For coming. For the public's knowledge, she accepted my invitation to come speak, we've talked about her coming a lot, and come to find out that we never invited her. So, sometimes we have to remember, if we invite people, they will come and speak, and we truly thank you for addressing the county, as well as addressing our city.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank all of you for allowing me the time to speak to you this evening, and we value our partnership with the city of Villa Park, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, next, we're gonna have a presentation from Orange County Treasurer, Sherri Frynroy. Nice to have you.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Fassalene, and members of the Villa Park City Council. I think this is a good transition to go from the safety of your citizens to the safety of your money.
Perfect.
We work very closely together, Honorable Hutchins and I. We are here tonight to give you a brief update on the investments that you have entrusted to the county and the treasurer myself. I do plan to cover, next slide, please, three key areas this evening. First, some information about the city's investments in the Orange County Investment Pool, known as OSIP, as part of your overall portfolio. Next, I will highlight some important information about the OSIP, including my responsibility to you as an investor, some key pool statistics, and some benefits of investing in OSIP. Then I will close with some information on other services that the city provides to Villa Park that come out of my office also. Next page, please. To start off with an overview of the total investments of the city of Villa Park, you have 3.79 million, one back, sorry, 3.79 million as of August 31st, and OSIP is authorized under your investment policy as the Orange County Treasurer. You have a maximum amount of 35%, and currently, as of the end of September, you have just under $1 million with us, or 25%, certainly an important monies for you to help you pay for those expenses that you guys have. One of the items to note, when we were looking at your investment policy, is that withdrawals can now be updated same day, can be made same day, and not 30 days, so that was a change we made several years ago, and if it is over 5 million, we do ask for one day's notice. Next chart. The next chart shows your district, or your city pool balances for the last five years, and as you can see, in June, it was just a little bit over $1 million. Next chart. This chart shows the breakdown of your investments in OSIP by the investment type, and it's for the last five years, so you can see how we've moved from having very few treasuries in the pink to a much larger amount of treasuries. We've been working on reducing our excess liquidity, because as you know, if you have money available that you don't need today, you're going to take a reduction in yield, so if we can reduce excess liquidity and put the money when you need it, we will increase that return to you as an investor, and if we have an unexpected need, we need to be able to sell something, and treasuries are very liquid to sell. So we have increased our liquidity or our investments in the US treasuries. Next chart, please. The next chart just shows us your two short-term investment pooled funds are OSIP and LEAF, and certainly, we know that most of our agencies that we invest along with, invest with LEAF. As you can see in ours, we have a significant amount in government-sponsored or government directly backed funds, and we have over 80% in the green and the pink, and some other items there, and then on the LEAF side, they have a slightly lower percentage in those two areas.
What is LEAF?
I'm sorry, LEAF is the Local Agency Investment Pool, and that is through the State Treasurer's Office. And your city, along with many here in Orange County, have investments in the Local Agency Investment Pool, and probably use that, I'm thinking, as your primary liquidity, if you need funds, or it certainly could be OSIP, but it's another of the short-term pooled investments, very similar to us, we operate generally out of the government code, and so it gives you day-to-day liquidity, one-to-one out, but we're able to invest out to five years, both of the two types of investments. The next chart, please. The next chart just shows you a little pictorially, the comparison between the Orange County Investment Pool and LEAF. Again, you can see that we have a very high quality, very highly rated pool, our US governments are over 80%, and our AAA's are over 5%, so definitely a very high-quality portfolio, and a very little of the single A. Next chart, please. The next chart really shows the trends for the investment yields since June of 2008. You all might remember when short-term rates were over 5%, and certainly, since that time, the Federal Reserve has continued lowering rates, easing the money supply in the economy to try to come out of that Great Recession in 2008. We are starting to see a little bit of uptick, a little, a lot of that is rates haven't really moved, they've still been down at 0 to .25, but we've really been working on reducing that excess liquidity. We do have, as I'll mention later, your funds available probably within a day, I mean, easily within a day, because you have a small amount of funds, but it is important for us to know that if our investor needed funds, we would be able to provide those to them. So we do manage that liquidity, but because we have a lot of captive funds at the county, we're able to provide you a little bit better rate by maintaining that liquidity a little bit less. The next chart, please. This chart shows you the monthly net yield trends, and this is probably one more for Michelle, your finance director. What happens is every year, and we're getting in the property tax season, we have, we send out the bills, we start collecting property tax, and that money, shortly after we collect it, we apportion to each of the cities, including the city of Villa Park. So I do have some good news for you, this year, we were able to send our bills one month early, it was a goal of mine last year, but it takes a coordinated effort, it takes the assessor, the auditor controller, and then my staff, we sent them last year, almost the end of October, this year, we sent them in mid-September, and so we now have currently about $336 million more dollars today from property taxes than we did at the same time last year. And what'll happen is, we have that money, as it comes in, we're going to be paying it out at certain allocated dates to each of the agencies, including the city of Villa Park. So the next allocation will come out as of November 1st receipts, and we'll pay your city on November 12th. And last year, we really didn't have a whole lot of money there, because we, of course, hadn't had bills out that long, so this year, you should see a nice benefit this month. Now, of course, good things do, since we are at a very high collection rate, over 99%, you probably aren't going to get a whole lot more in total, because we're very highly, have a high collection rate, so that disbursement will then go down. But it's better to have money early than later. And this chart just shows that when those gray bars here are the months when we make those apportionments, the money comes in and it has to go out really within 30 days, so our yield does drop slightly. We are working to see how we can work through that, but it is a very small blip in time. Next chart, please. This is, I'm going to give you just some general information about OSIP, a little bit about the ownership of the funds, some key pool statistics, a little bit about the three objectives of public funds and how you benefit from them, and then some information and the oversight, because as you know, oversight on those funds is important. You rely on these funds every day to be able to be there, so you can make those expenses that you've committed to your citizens here. Next page, please. So as treasurer, I am a fiduciary of public funds, and I invest based on the prudent investor standard. Again, the same objectives that you have, we operate as a county pool, and that is to be in the best interest of the public. We can consolidate investment activities, reduce duplication, we can achieve economies of scale, which is, as Mr. Honorable Barnett said, will drive down costs, and by carrying out these consolidated investment strategies, we can provide you with a very safe product with very low cost, and it provides an excellent liquidity option for local governments, and we appreciate your taking advantage of our pool to assist with your investments. Next page. This is just about the ownership of pool funds, that at the same time that, after the bankruptcy in the county, and then the state was having issues, where they were trying to take some of the investor funds from this LEAF pool, there were legislation passed, "The money is your money, and it is not anything that if you call to me to say, 'I need my money,' the county cannot stop me from providing that money to you, it is your money." So this is basically the legislation that supports that ownership of public funds by each agency. Next page. This just gives you a little bit about our key statistics, couple of important things, our weighted average maturity is about 448 days, so a little bit over a year, our duration is 1.12, and what that means is, if the Fed were to raise rates 1%, we would see a 1% decrease in our market value, because of course, we bought at rates today, and if rates go up, what we bought today is now worth a little bit less. But we have plenty of liquidity to be able to manage, we have, you'll see our maturity chart later, so those are things that we work with daily. We do have a net value of 1 to 1, our market value and our book value, and our yield currently Next chart, please. This just gives you a little bit of an overview back from September of 2008 to current, you can see when rates were much higher, our portfolio has slightly grown, as you can see, the main thing is, we've extended out a little bit of our maturities to take advantage of better matching our liabilities with our expenditures, and again, we still have daily liquidity, we've also had a drop in our expenses, we've gone from about 10 basis points down to seven. I know that doesn't sound like a lot, three basis points, but it means that you have triple the amount, you know, your expenses are less, and so that three basis points definitely helps on that yield, to be able to get slightly more yield. The next chart, please. I'm not going to cover each of these charts, these cover the safety, liquidity, and yield key points. Again, we have 99% in the two highest rating categories, and this is a great diversification option. Next chart, please. On the liquidity side, again, our portfolio has 11% liquid in 30 days, and almost 25% in three months, and we do maintain 100% of our pool participant funds that are available within three days, and with your fund being about $1 million, we certainly have it available every day if you were to need that. So that's the assurance, you know that that money is there if you ever needed to withdraw on it. Next slide, please. This shows our maturity schedule, and as you can see, we have some liquidity for under 30 days, and then, right now, our highest percentage is in the one to two years, and then really out to four to five years, we don't have anything, it's just not been where the value is in the market, and we certainly try to make sure, as an investor, we try to take care of your investments and look where that value is. The next chart is certainly one that's important, but it is the third objective, net yield, and as I said, we have a year-to-date net yield of .51. Next chart, please. Just some other considerations of investing with us, we are local, as Honorable Sheriff Hutchins mentioned, we also have no profit motive, we can only charge the costs through that we incur, so that's an advantage to you, you're only getting those costs that really relate to us administering your funds. We do have an oversight committee, similar to yours, that is open to the public, we welcome anyone to come, and one of the things that we do offer, that we think is useful, and several agencies have taken advantage of it, when we offer some training, we offer them to our pool participants at the same cost at the county. So that does help, because being a smaller city, you know, you don't have some of those opportunities to bring in trainers, we have that, because we have a lot of funds, so it's something that we certainly will be working with Michelle, as we have some training that we come up with. Next slide, please. We always want to make sure that we're wholly transparent, currently, we do hone some investments for the county of Orange, we own 12.7 million of those pension obligation bonds, these are short-term bonds that actually mature within a year and a half, they are the prepayment for the pension that your agency might also be doing at this time. Next chart, please. Again, oversight is very important, we take it very seriously, we are very proud that in the last several years, any of our compliance exceptions, which have been very minor, have all been self-reported, we have been able to identify those, we are one of the most audited departments at the county because of the bankruptcy, and we make sure that we are keeping those oversight very well-informed, and we're making sure we're taking care of those funds. Next chart. Again, this is just some highlights, some of the changes we've made over the last several years, I know we haven't been back, so I won't spend time going through it, but certainly you can read through those, and if you have any questions, certainly we are available, but we're always trying to work on making things streamlined or improve the process that we work with our investors. Lastly, the next chart, I just want to talk a little bit about what we do for you outside of investing your money, we are, we do all the property tax collection, as you know, Villa Park is a non-tier city, and last year, we had a record collection year of over 99%, 99.20, that was less than 1% delinquency, which is great, that means that you get your money upfront, you can use it to spend, and certainly those funds we can't collect upfront, we're going to be able to collect those for you, so that you can really realize those benefits from the property tax. We talked a little bit about the apportionment coming up that will be higher. The other thing we're working on is, we found out that most cities don't have electronic payments for the property transfer tax, even though they have it for the property tax, so we're going to be working with your city to see if we can actually merge those. It's amazing how many people, the checks go out, and maybe a week later, we see they hadn't cleared yet, so we want to get you the money immediately, so you can have it and be starting to invest it. We also do assessments on property tax bills, we have 28 cities that add assessments to the tax bill, I believe we collect over $490,000 a year in terms of these special assessments for the city of Villa Park. We also do the billing and delinquent invoicing for the animal control. You might have noticed in the last property tax bill that went out, there was a nice little insert on licensing, we want to encourage licensing, because that does provide money to the city to offset those costs of that animal shelter and the licensing. And as mentioned, the sheriff provides a great service to you to keep your citizens safe, and with that, I'll turn to the last slide, we are here to keep your money safe. I'm here with my two staff, I'd like to introduce them. First, we have Tomas Vargas, the Assistant Treasurer Tax Collector, in charge of investments here, and we also have Paul Gorman, our Chief Assistant Treasurer Tax Collector, and he's in charge of treasury. Again, we are honored to be entrusted with the funds, and to make sure we keep those safe, we are here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Now, historically, I think you've addressed our Investment Advisory Committee, so I'm not sure if you've ever addressed the council before, so thank you so much for coming, I'm not quite sure who arranged it, whether, I think Bill and Bob both arranged you coming, so thank you.
We did.
For coming to address the council.
Thank you again.
And I appreciate that.
Again.
I did have one question.
Yes, Honorable Nelson.
I believe that you've had a plan to have a more medium-term fund, because what you're in the short term is really not very good, you know.
Right, it's where short-term rates are, so you're exactly right.
But I understand you had some plan to do a medium-term fund that would provide more income, could you tell us what the status of that is?
Thank you, Honorable Nelson, I might through the mayor, we do have plans to look at pooling money that would be on a longer-term basis, I know currently you have, I think, CalTrust is one of your investments, so it would be something similar to that, where there would be less withdrawal options, because of course, you, we wouldn't want that daily liquidity, but it would allow you then to be able to take advantage of some higher yields. It is still on our calendar, but it has probably been pushed out, I would say, we'll probably start working on it perhaps in later, in 2016. We, at the county, have a lot of landfills, we have a lot of long infrastructure projects, and so we do have a lot of funds that would benefit from that, so you would be in a pool of larger-type. We also do provide some options for specific investments, so if there is some dollars that you're looking just to ladder, I know- that you're looking just to ladder, I know there are some options, but again, with rates so low, it's just difficult to make those pay very much. So we will keep in touch with your finance and your city manager because, at this point, it's not close enough for us to really be able to provide it, but it sounds like you have interest in that, and that helps us. We do a lot of water agencies, and they, of course, have some of their reserves that are more long-term.
Yeah. I would encourage you to do it because I do look at Cal Trust, and they have the medium-term, and their rates are almost three times of what yours is.
Right. We're actually getting closer. I think our rate this month was 0.58, and I think they were 0.82. So because of these, managing our cash better, and, you know, we haven't sacrificed any quality at all, we are looking to do that, but you're right. It is still going to be lower because they have less withdrawal options, and you probably don't need all of that money tomorrow. You need it over the next several years.
Yeah, their withdrawal option, I believe, is once a month, and a lot of times, we don't need money any more frequently than that. I don't think Michelle makes daily withdrawals. So we have a need more for less liquidity and more return.
Great. Well, I do appreciate that, and what we'll do is we'll follow up with Michelle on it. And again, thank you very much for letting us come. We're honored to be here.
I have one question. We had a 99.2% secured collection rate in comparison to the other cities in Orange County. Where are we?
In comparison to...
The other cities in Orange County. We had a collection rate of 99.2.
Actually, that was the county as a whole.
County as a whole.
So that's the county as a whole had a collection rate. Probably, we have a, we put out a new GIS map online that allows you to go on, and kind of it's a Google-type map. One of the things we're looking to do is try to filter some of the dollars now that we have this, so we could actually probably see what was that collection rate in Villa Park. So that's something we don't have today, but I think we now have the technology to do some of those types of things, and probably the auditor controller has that. So what I'll do is I'll make a note, and we'll follow up and let you know what your collection rate is. You obviously have a lot of good taxpayers here, hopefully paying taxes timely.
Well, that would be good. I know when it comes to the animal control, we were like at 98% when, because I did visit them, so it was a, and that was just our city, so that was...
Yes, and that's great. I know that, you know, we put out that licensee insert. Again, the cost was so small because it didn't increase postage. It was really almost a free insert. You get it out to 850,000 people, and it went to every resident that you have here. So each of them knows those things, and hopefully will even continue. 98 is pretty good, so when you're at 98, it's hard to get much better, but we're at 99, so you might still have that 1%.
Well, that was a pretty good, I have to say, a very good thing to mail the bills out 30 days earlier. Amazing how many people paid it 30 days earlier, so.
It is. And it really avoided a lot of incoming calls because people start calling in September. "Where's my bill? I never got my bill. Now it's online." They can go online, put in their address, and get it, and it really just takes that stress level of that person just down. They can 24/7 get it, so really makes a big difference for us.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Yes, Honorable Nelson.
Now, you mentioned that there was a law that was passed so that the, so that Sacramento can't take the funds away from us. It's our money.
Yes.
Now, there's also this other move afoot in Sacramento regarding a forced retirement fund that's going through the Assembly right now, and I'm curious how that can, once they take that money from everyone, say it's 1% or 2%, can they use that in general funds and then just write an IOU back to the fund?
You know, Honorable Nelson, I'm not as familiar with that. So this is where they are going to have the cities paying in money?
No, it would be every individual, but I mean...
Oh, this is the, every individual?
In the state.
Right, right. This is sort of like, instead of having the pension plan for, they would do the investing for it. Is that the one you're talking about?
And they would have a pension fund set up.
Certainly, they should have those funds in trust. I mean, I'm a CPA, you know, just like your deferred comp funds, there's a trustee that manages those, so I would expect that these would have to go into a trust, and so they would be protected from the state going in and taking, like what they do with transportation funds, where they're maybe using some of those funds. I would think that any of those personal funds would have to be in a trust, but I am not as familiar with those details. But that would be critical to have those so that they can't be tapped.
Okay, because I thought that was great that you said that there's, well, they can't take the funds that the cities have already given to you.
Right, exactly. Our Board of Supervisors, you know, bless them, but they can't touch your funds because they are your funds, and they can't use those to borrow. Even if they have liquidity issues, they cannot go in and take your funds, and I will not let them.
Okay.
Assuming all we're talking about here is that they codified the trust fund and just statutorily mandated is determined to be a trust fund and therefore can't become involved in bankruptcy proceedings, for example, I assume that's basically all they did.
Probably something similar to that. You know, I don't have the bill number with me, but yes, they, you know, established that these funds are not, you know, it's not a credit or debt or relationship. You own the funds. We pool them for investment purposes only, and it's just for the pooling of those that we allow those economies of scales so that your account is separate, and you have that money in your account, and no one could go in and take that money from you.
I think what she's talking about, I'm a bankruptcy attorney. I think what you're referring to, if it relates back to the bankruptcy, is if the county has enough control over the funds, then there's an argument that it belongs to the bankruptcy estate. And if the state passes a statute that clearly states that these are trust funds and they don't belong to the county, then the issue should be over. I think that's probably what we're talking about.
Yes, I think you're correct, Honorable Nelson.
And I'd like to, unless somebody else has got questions for I...
No.
No, okay. I just like to invite our guests to feel free to depart to their homes or whatever they want to do and not feel obligated to sit here and be hurt.
Oh, please don't.
So that they don't walk out after they're finished with their discussion because I can tell you that from up here, I appreciate you all coming, and I would certainly invite you to depart at your leisure and don't feel compelled to sit here because you're done to be polite. We certainly won't take it that way, so.
Go home and eat dinner, is what he's saying. Go home.
The mayor...
We like you here, but you're welcome to go home.
We like having you here, but you're certainly welcome, and you sit here.
That was very nice. Very good. All right.
I get that concern, and so I wish somebody would have liked me to do that while I'm sitting here.
Careful, someone may ask you, tell you to go home, so be careful. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You appear to be no different than I am.
All right. Next, we're update from the Orange County Fire Authority.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members, city staff, and citizens of the community. Jeff O'Hair with the Battalion Chief, Orange County Fire Battalion Three. We serve Villa Park. Two things before you this evening. First, emergency calls for the city in the last month is 30 calls for service. 29 of them were EMS calls, medical calls, or service calls, one of which was one of the residents mistakenly drove his car through his garage. And so we responded out on that. He compromised the structure pretty good, so we brought out our technical heavy rescue personnel who placed two shores, and then they ended up using the winch on our heavy rescue unit out of Irvine to pull the vehicle back without damaging the structure any further. And then, following that, there was one fire reported in the city, and that fire was handled with the first U.A.G. company. It was a garage fire. Lastly, I'd like to just address the emergency preparedness. We're all getting ready for the El Nino fall and winter coming up with everything that's showing up on the weather reports we're seeing, but just don't forget that fire season is still full effect. And so as soon as the sand and winds pick up, that means everything's going to dry out in just a couple of days. Everything's raring to burn once again, and so we're just asking the citizens to please stay vigilant regarding fire safety. Past that, regarding the rain events, Station 23, at 5020, San Diego Canyon Road is our fire station here for the city, and they have sand and sandbags. At least they did until today. The pile that we had delivered about four weeks ago has been totally decimated. All the citizens have been coming over, picking up all our sandbags, getting ready. And so for the next couple of days, if anybody needs sand in the city, we ask them to go to Irvine and Newport. Our Station 21 in the city of Tustin has additional sand and sandbags. It's going to take me until Friday to get sand delivered back to Station 23. But past that, any more information that any of the citizens need regarding emergency preparedness, they can look at our website at www.ocfac.org. Any questions for the council?
We also have some sandbags here.
Okay.
We don't have sand, though, but we have bags.
You have bags. Oh, we've even had a sand, so.
So we have bags.
By this weekend, we should have sand back at Station 23.
Wonderful, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to, let's see where we're at here. We don't need an update from the sheriff unless, Rob, you have something else you want to give to us? I mean...
Well, I can just say that real quick.
Okay. Sheriff did a great job.
Did an excellent job, as usual. I just wanted to report the drug takeback that we had last month was extremely successful. I think they reported four boxes that they recovered from Villa Park, which everyone was very impressed and very active here as to participate in that program. So it went really well. Otherwise, we are getting ready for Saturday for Halloween, and then we're already staffing the sanitation and the boat parade. Those are the three other things I wanted to discuss.
Wonderful.
That was it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your compliments. It was unnecessary, but very nice. Thank you.
I'd like to move the Law Enforcement Committee update to the end. We have some items to go to. Any objections?
I'm sorry, we just, what was your comment?
To move the Law Enforcement Advisory Committee update to the end. We've had a good update from the Sheriff Department, council.
I received a message from Vince, the senior, the chairman of the LIAC, and he's home ill tonight, so we'll report next month.
Okay. All right, we're going to move on to public comment. At this time, members of the public may address the council on any item that is not on the agenda. No action can be taken, so if there's anyone here, I don't have any blue cards, so if there's an item that someone wants to speak about that's not on the agenda, you have five minutes if you would come and speak.
Good evening, council. Jim Warden, 10021, Sycamore, Villa Park. All of us have been watching with some, I'm sure all of us, with anxious what's happening at the corner where the old gas station was. And we've seen activity over the last little bit. There was a piece in the paper about the proposed businesses or potential businesses that might go in there. So one of the concerns I have, and I actually spoke with city manager Jared, and I said, "Any traffic studies done on this?" And I said, "To give you an example, we have ingress egress, two spots out on Santiago out there." And Jared referred to it lovingly as the Bermuda Triangle, and that's the entrance right by Union Bank that, while we haven't had a fatal there yet, we probably will at some point in the future, the way that thing's laid out. I asked about whether or not if a In-N-Out drive-through that was going to go through there, or I mean, a dominant drive-through company that was going to go in there, had we required a traffic investigation study about the circulation of traffic, and city manager told me it wasn't required. I would find this council and this city totally remiss if we don't insist upon that, and here's why. First of all, in the morning, we have kids to and from our grade schools and our high schools and our middle schools that traverse the traffic areas out here. They traverse those ingress egress areas of this city. For us not to require an extensive traffic study and maybe a reorganization of how those ingress egress operates, and from what was proposed, I think we're going to have a problem. And I would ask the council to reconsider, what is it we have to do to be sure that we can maintain the safety of not only the kids, but the traffic throughout the center here? And if this business is going to be successful, which I assume that they've made enough investigations to figure out that they're going to make money sitting out there, they're going to have to have vehicle traffic go through there because it's a drive-through to buy coffee and donuts. So I would hope that we find a way, find something inside of our rules, regulations, et cetera, to require any sort of construction and any sort of ingress egress because of the traffic. And without that study, the answer is no. I would hope we take a look at that. Last but not least, I attended the Villa Park session that had to do with the common area space at Wanda and Cotella.
And that's an agenda I...
And I know it's an agenda item, but it's item 12. I'm not going to stay for item 12, but I would ask you to move item 12 forward. There may be one or two comments out of the audience here that would be appropriate. There was, there were about 20 people that showed up for that, and I think it would be appropriate, let's just bring that to the front of the list or closer to the front of the list and get whatever comments that are available and go from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments for an item that's not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none. We're going to go to our first public hearing, which is waive reading in full of all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda. All right. Do I have a motion to waive the reading of full ordinances, resolutions, and meeting minutes on the agenda?
I'll some of.
Second.
Hey, sorry, I was turning off my... Councilman Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Mills?
Yes.
Councilman Colicott?
Yes.
Councilman Barnett?
Yes.
Mayor Fasenelli?
Yes.
Carries, 50.
All right, we're going to go on to our second public hearing. This is consideration of ordinance number 2015-595, amending several sections of the Villa Park Municipal Code regarding rules of debate, lapse of variance or conditional use permit, preparation of ordinances, and traffic safety committee. So we're going to take these one at a time. I know they're lumped in together, but they don't have anything in common. So let's take the first one, which is the lapse of variance or conditional use permit. Jared?
Yes, and Commander Mayor, this one was brought forward by Councilman Nelson at the meeting, I believe in August, to look at how CUPs and variance permits expire. The code currently reads in two parts, that a CUP or variance will expire unless a building permit is issued and construction is commenced and diligently pursued. However, once a building permit is issued, the permitting technically has 180 days to commence construction. But if the permit is issued the day before, a variance is set to expire within a one-year timeframe unless extended. You know, technically, it's in contrast with the later half of the code, which is construction is commenced and diligently pursued. So what we're recommending is that we drop that last half. So now the code will currently read, let me go down to the part, that a variance or conditional use permit shall lapse and become void one year following the date on which the variance or conditional use permit became effective unless prior to the expiration of one year, the building permit is issued. So we're just going to drop the construction is commenced and diligently pursued portion of that.
Okay. Do we have any discussion from council before I open up public comment?
I'd like to know how this impacts us, actually. I'm not quite sure. Well, this is, we have, the current practice we have now is working.
No, it's not working. For example, the most recent one that we had with the, here on the corner, they had one year to get the permit and start construction. That's what our rules read. Well, at the last day or so, they got the permit, but they couldn't, but the permit gives them 180 days to start construction. So the second part of it is useless, so why not drop it? I mean, they still have 180 days. They didn't have to comply with both parts of the thing to get to, to get there, to continue their variance.
So you're saying this is streamlined?
No, that's just that the second part is redundant because if they get the permit by the end of the time, then they still have 180 days to do construction. So it's, the point is, it's a moot point. There's no need, there's no need to have it.
I think it's a conflict, what you're saying, Greg. There's literally a bit of a conflict in the language itself.
Exactly.
Because, because the variance provision says that you've got a year to, you know, to pull a permit and commence construction, but when you pull a permit, you have 6, you have 180 days to commence construction.
Right.
So, it's a little bit in conflict, and the issue was really to clarify it is, do we want to provide that if you get a variance, you lose that six-month period after you get your permit to start construction because you came in on a variance, so that if you've got a variance, you essentially don't get the extra six months from when you pull your permit to start construction? Or do we want to treat it, when you pull that permit, do we want to treat it as any other permit, whether you've got a variance or not, that you have six months to start construction when you get a permit? It's ambiguous, and I think you're just trying to clarify what's going on. Probably makes sense, unless for some reason, council doesn't want to give someone that extra six months to get started from the time they're pulling their permit if the permit is the result of a variance. That would be the issue.
But then you'd have to go back and change our rules, because my understanding is our rules allow, once you get a permit, you have 180 days.
So, it's... Yeah, it's ambiguous and it conflicts.
It's just a cleanup on this one.
So, this is basically a cleanup that's really going to actually give them a little more time.
No, they currently have time, because once they got their permit, they have 180 days now. So, they don't have to comply with what the literal reading of the ordinance says. They don't have to comply with it because 180 days wants to get the permit. So, I'm saying it's redundant. You can't enforce it, so why even have it?
I don't know if that's exactly correct, Bill.
Well...
It depends on how you interpret the ordinance. If you interpreted the ordinance as only giving you a year to issue and start, then you're subject to that provision. I think the problem is, it's a little ambiguous and confusing, and I suspect the city staff doesn't particularly want to tell someone who got a variance and then pulls the permit 10 months later or 12 months later, 11 and a half months.
Except they have to break ground tomorrow.
That now you've got to start construction tomorrow when the thing has a six-month period. It's not real pleasant.
Well, the city manager told me, and I'll ask council, that my understanding is, once you get the permit, you have 180 days, no matter what this says.
I don't know that that's... It depends on the interpretation.
So, once you pull any building permit, you have 180 days to commence construction, or else that permit expires. We have... Now, it's not to be confused with construction time limits, which is governed by another section of the Villa Park Municipal Code. This is just to commence construction.
And what does that commence... What does that mean exactly? Put a shovel in the ground?
Your first inspection, essentially.
But if they pull the permit a day before, they have an additional 180 days, and that's important to know.
Once you pull a building permit, you have a vested right.
Correct.
So, if you were to pull a building permit on day 364, and on day 365, we expire it for not meeting the second half of that, construction is commenced and diligently pursued, there would be a case that we have just violated their vested rights law.
It's a conflict, because once it's issued, if they issue it right before the year lapses...
Right.
The ordinance says you've got six months to start construction.
Right.
Okay, so now they get it issued, and they're going to argue, "Hey, the ordinance says we've got this." If the city want to take issue with it, they have to come back and say, "Yes, but your permit was issued pursuant to a variance that had a one-year limit in it." And, you know, the bottom line is, who needs to have that kind of battle with our citizens? Let's just decide what we want to do and make it the rule.
Because in this particular instance, we provide them with the permit, and we're providing them 160 days. So, they didn't comply with both parts of this, and we're not holding them to it. So, if we're not holding them to it, then why do we even have it in our code?
Are we picking on this particular property?
No, I'm not picking on this particular property. This particular property just brought up the issue, because they got it at the last minute.
Mayor, if I may, I think really the simplest explanation is, the code says, requires this two-step process. The California Building Code says, once you get a building permit, you have 180 days. So, our code is currently inconsistent with the California Building Code, right? So, once you get that building permit, you have 180 days to go. We're saying you have 180 days, and you have to break ground. And if you have to do that within one year, the California Building Code doesn't require that. This is a cleanup to be consistent with the California Building Code.
We basically have a conflict with the California Code, so our ordinance is probably... Or it's probably no good anyway.
So, it would...
Exactly.
It's prudent to eliminate that, so that we're consistent with state law, which we've adopted.
Why don't we just do it?
Well, let me open up public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this matter?
I have a question. I frankly am not well-advised on the subject, but I have a question. We have projects that have gone on and on and on and haven't been completed, and I think it's something we ought to address, is that perpetual construction...
But that's not this issue. That's not this issue. Right, so we're not going to discuss that.
Eighteen months, then a year, then another 18 months. That's, you know, that's a long time for neighbors to put up with.
We're not going to discuss that on this issue, though. That's not this code.
That's a different topic.
Okay, well, that's a different issue.
Yes, different issue.
Thank you.
I told you I wasn't informed on this.
If I could jump in, we do have construction time limits. However, we just adopted them, so...
All right.
Unless somebody else has something, I'll make the motion.
Let me close public comment, please.
Got a motion?
All right, and now we got a motion on the second.
Well, we're going to group everything into one ordinance, so what I suggest is that we move down to section 2-3.8, rules of debate.
No, I think we should take... We need to take them separate. They're completely separate issues.
Yeah, you can't do that, because you may have a split vote. You can't assume they're all going to go the same way.
No, it's...
We can make substitute motions.
Well, what I did was wrote it into the same ordinance for the ease of every item, so I'll have to come back with a separate ordinance for each and every municipal code section.
We can talk about it, and we can make changes.
Well, or we can take it until we get a split vote. If we happen, I don't know if we will or if we won't. How's that?
Yeah, I think that's fine. Also, it's the first reading, so we could propose that they be done in four ordinances. We'll come back at the second reading with all four, but we recognize...
Let's see how it goes first. If we get yes on all of them, it won't be an issue.
There won't be an issue.
Oh, no, then we'll deal with it.
But in the future, if we do anything like this, these items should be separate.
Yeah.
You know, I think it'd be easier for us to follow.
Should we take an informational little poll as we go through to see where we're at, because he's going to end up having to split it if there's a...
Well, why don't we take a vote on each one of them?
That's what I...
Well, that's what we wanted to do.
And then you can go back and take a real vote on the whole deal and make it amend the ordinance to change one of them, and then you can still put it together as one.
Okay.
May I have the motion in the second again?
Motion to approve...
Rick and Greg.
Motion to approve the modification of the ordinance to allow the additional 180 days after pulling the permit to start construction where there's a variance involved. In other words, it's to strike the language you had to describe.
Yeah.
Councilman Barnett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Mills?
Yes.
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Fasenelli?
Yes.
Carries, 5-0.
All right, so we have item number two, which is the rules of debate here. And Jared, you want to give us a synopsis?
Yes, this ordinance would amend the Villa Park Municipal Code to add... Go down. A subsection number E, reconsideration of prior actions. What this will do is, in essence, not allow for the unlimited revisiting of settled issues by council. It is recommended to remove the sentence and restrict the reconsideration of settled issues for a period of at least one year. So, let's say tonight, we talked about rules of debate. It passes one way or another. We couldn't agendize the matter at the next meeting. We would have to wait one year to revisit the issue.
So, this was brought from Councilman Nelson, so...
Yes.
Some discussion. Councilman? Do you want to...
Oh, yeah. I brought this because sometimes people bring things back over and over and over at council meetings, and I don't think that should happen. I think once you settle an issue, it should take at least some time before it can be brought back. That's all. Unless there... It also has some things in here that indicates it can be brought back soon, I think, if the city manager or the city attorney indicate there's some compelling new issues related to it.
Legal issues have changed, or a council member on the prevailing side requests to bring it back, or if there's an election in between that and a newly seated council member requests to bring it back.
Seated and requests to bring it back. So, there are some exceptions to that.
How often does this occur?
Quite often.
Example?
The HERO program. We've talked about the HERO program several times over, you know, the course of, I believe, the year that we were considering that.
Which was during fireworks at the same time, so they usually came on at about 11:30 or 1 o'clock in the morning, so which was...
But fireworks was another great example. Council passed and approved fireworks, and then another council member agendized at the next meeting to repeal that ordinance. So, fireworks is another example of this.
I find this to be... I understand the reasoning in doing that, that we don't want to talk about the same things over and over again, but if you read through our minutes over the last 15 years, we don't have a whole lot to talk about in Villa Park, and it really, quite frankly, is always the same issues, if you look at it. Same parking issues, same building issues. It's kind of interesting how it is. But I find this to be kind of a gag order, frankly, on council. I don't think it's an issue here. Sometimes we pass things and something new comes up, and all I can give you as an example is if we pass a no parking or a red zone in some particular place, and five residents move out, and you get new residents that move in and they don't want it, well, it's been a year. And for the person who... The councilperson who voted against it, they can't bring that up. I think you should be allowed to bring it up, and we shouldn't put a moratorium on what elected officials can bring to council here. I don't think it's an issue here. Any discussion?
Yeah, this, in my mind, clearly flowed from the foundation vote. I think that's what triggered this when we brought Greg back. And the reason for that, frankly, was to try and get a complete vote on the issue. It didn't happen. And I, frankly, am not big on rules. To me, the less rules, the better. You know, there is a certain amount of logic to this if you have the problem. I can't argue with that. But I think, frankly, I've been here for about three and a half years. I've never really seen much of a problem. I have seen a couple of issues pop up. Jared, you mentioned the one, we have this issue. I remember why the issue on the foundation came up, and I frankly am happy that we got to at least give it another opportunity to be presented for a full vote. Some of the other issues, you know, sometimes we get something up here... Fireworks is a good example. Where we get something up here, it's really not a contested issue. You know, we had Councilwoman Polly that basically voted with us. It was unanimous on the fireworks the first time around. And then after that meeting, it gets out, and some people get upset, and you get... In that case, there was a significant piece of the community was upset about it. And so, you know, it comes back again, and this is such a small community, hasn't really been that... Hasn't been that big a problem. I'm a little reluctant to shut the door, even though I like to go through things five times. I'm a little reluctant to shut the door, because I think maybe it's good sometimes, such as the fireworks. I was on the pro fireworks person that presented it, but, you know, there was such a large body that was concerned about it. You know, I'm kind of glad they have the right to come back and be heard on it again and didn't have to wait for a year. It's just a small community, and I kind of like having that open door. If it became a big problem, then obviously, I think we'd probably have to do something. But I'm not really inclined to put that kind of restriction in myself unless it becomes a big problem.
Also, I believe a lot of times, there's been requests to have things put on the agenda, and for whatever reason, you tended to move them off maybe a month or so at a time, too. I think that particular type of avenue can be used as well. I don't want to shut the door. I think this is a community that wants to talk about anything they want at any time and have it brought back up. That's... I see the logic here. I see the logic, I do. But I think... I don't... I think that the amount of time that we spend on these types of issues is very small compared to other things, too. I mean, there's other things that can be lumped into this that will tie our hands, possibly. I don't think we want to do that. Otherwise, I see the logic, but I think as a council, we pretty much avoid all those kind of problems, really.
Well, if we avoid all those problems, then this wouldn't really be a problem for you, because what it indicates here, it says it can be brought back if there's some change in the issue. What I want to prevent is just bringing stuff back that's the same stuff that nothing has changed. And it was brought up by bringing the foundation back, vote back at the very next meeting. So, I went in and took a look at what our rules of debate are, and to me, I know other organizations, they have this in because it's a good governance practice. And if you tell me you don't want to do good governance practice, then that's all right, you know? But most places have this kind of provision in their rules of debate, because they don't want things being brought back over and over again where nothing has changed. You just bring the same thing back. If you lose this time, I'll bring it back and try to get it again. If there's something that's changed about it, you can bring it back with this. Why would you bring it back if nothing has changed?
Bill, I understand the position. I think the distinction to me is the small size of this community and the fact that I've been here for three and a half years, never been a big problem, and I like having the open nature. I'll give you an example. The fireworks, even if it doesn't fit exactly hypothetically, I think it's a good example. We had a fireworks vote here, and it was unanimous, okay? And nothing changed, other than the fact that the community became what we were doing, and there was a lot of opposition. And so, it came back again, and you know...
Why isn't there a change, then, if there's a lot of opposition? Why isn't there a change?
Well, if you want to get to that, then the change is going to be so vague that you'll... And amorphous, you'll never be able to find what's adequate change. All somebody's got to do is come and say, "I've heard a lot more opposition." I mean, getting more opposition isn't a change of...
Okay, it's not a big deal with me. It's just that I thought it was something that's good governance. I thought I'd bring it to you. If you don't want it, it's fine with me.
I understand it is not a huge deal with me either. I just don't think we need the rule unless it really becomes a problem, and I haven't seen it become a problem. And in some circumstances, such as fireworks, for example, I thought it was nice that you could bring it back, just because more people became more and want to be involved, and they missed it. And we listened, and we gave them the opportunity and put it out to vote. So, for that reason, I kind of like having the flexibility. I understand from a management perspective your position, and I respect it, but I think in this city, unless we have a real problem with it, I kind of like the flexibility so that the community can, if they hear about something, come back, even if there isn't change of circumstances.
But also, it indicates in here, and then correct me if I'm wrong, but it says a council member who voted with majority issued the council previous consideration issue can bring it back.
The majority.
At any time.
The majority.
Right.
That voted in a majority.
Right.
So, if you're on the winning side, you can bring it back.
But if you're on the losing side, you can't.
That wouldn't work for the fireworks people, because we were the winning side.
But you're the winner. But in that case, the minority would not have been able to bring it back. You said it was a unanimous vote.
Initially, it was unanimous.
So, everybody was in the majority, so anybody could bring it back. Under these rules, anybody could bring it back.
And we had subsequent votes where there wasn't a unanimous...
Yeah, you're right. A member of the majority...
A member of the majority can bring it back any time.
Yeah, you're right. It wouldn't work in that circumstance.
It's to prevent the loser from bringing it back over and over. That's what it is.
Like the HERO program.
And if that happens...
Exactly. It's prevent the loser from bringing it back over and over. The winner can always bring it back.
And you know what? If that happens, I'll probably be voting the other way than I'm going to vote tonight.
Let me open up public comment on this item. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on this item?
Couldn't touch it with a 10-foot pole.
All right. All right, that 10-foot pole is not coming up to the podium at this point. I'm going to bring it back to council if there's any other discussion. If not...
I think we're... I agree with Rick, it's what I said earlier, too, is that if it allows the public to air it out, I think we need to do that.
But you can air it out. You can bring it back any time if you're on the winning side.
On the winning side. The gag order on elected officials, quite frankly...
No, it's not a gag order.
It is. You do have elected officials who represent certain people that maybe don't care for something that's there. And we're a small city. I don't feel that it's, that it's an issue. I think we've all said our, our piece at this point. Is there a motion?
But, but I don't think because we're a small city that we shouldn't have good governance practices.
I think it's good. I think we listen to our city.
I don't, I don't think so. I think we, I think we should have excellent government practices, but being a small city.
Do, is there a motion?
I'm going to move, I'm going to move that we make the change.
A second?
I'll second it. I think that, you know, it's, it's good governance, and it's one of those rules that you're not going to need it until you need it, you know, when something keeps coming back. So I'll, I'll second it.
Councilman Nelson?
Yes.
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
No.
Mayor Proten Mills?
No.
Mayor Fasenelli?
No.
The motion fails. So we'll remove it from the ordinance.
You can bring it back. Please, Bill.
Bill, sorry.
The, the next section-
So where are we at now? Because now we have one large ordinance that you put together.
I will strike this section from the ordinance. We'll remove it.
Okay.
All they have to do is remove that section from the ordinance. You pass all others, then, you just, by manning the ordinance, you take that out?
Yeah.
That's all.
You can make that into motion at the end, too.
Next item.
Next item is the Traffic and Safety Committee. In 1978 and 1983, Article 2 point, 2 dash 7 in 19 dash 1, establish a Traffic and Safety Committee. Now, that committee has not met since 2001, but it is still in our Villa Park Municipal Code. I'm recommending that we essentially dissolve the committee and repeal these sections from our code. One reason for doing this is now we have the established Law Enforcement Advisory Committee, and their duty is somewhat mere the Traffic and Safety Committee, in which they recommend ways to the city council on improving traffic conditions inside the city.
Just a question, Jared. Why has the committee not met since 2002 or whenever?
I don't have an answer to that. I'm not, I'm not too sure. That was before my time.
Lack of need?
It was in 2001. I haven't pulled the minutes from it. They met one time since then, and I don't even know. I can't even speculate.
So this is really a cleanup.
Lack of need, lack of need, lack of interest. I mean, we, we're a city that participates in committees, and people are very vocal. If they didn't meet, they didn't feel that they needed to.
Yeah, I wasn't even aware that we had a Traffic Safety Committee.
I think we lost a representative at the Cal Auto Association, so they're that probably.
Well, it's actually been in our minutes when Leac and the issue of the Serrano Featherhill parking issue, the Traffic Safety Committee did a lot of reports. So that did come up quite a bit. So that, that has come up in the minutes for prior, you know, in the history of why we did certain things. So it's been in the documents with this, with this council here of that. And it's not a committee anymore, and get rid of it. I mean, it's not there.
Well, it's still there.
We can move this one.
Well, no, I need to go to public comment first, if anyone has any objections to removing a committee that no longer physically exists.
Because, Wayne Solzal, 18202 Montana Circle. Because they haven't met, and because they haven't addressed issues, we certainly have had traffic issues, and we have had safety issues. Failure to meet is not a reason to dismiss the purpose of the committee, because we are working hard to keep the city safe and to make improvements. We also receive input from outside the city, from the county and others concerning, we just had one a year ago, contesting the width of Villa Park of Cotella, Villa Park Road, trying to expand it, claiming that we, as a council, years ago, consented to making it a major arterial, which would have gone to six lanes rather than the four that currently exists. We had to go back through the minutes, and that was in, and prove that there was no action to approve that, and it was simply based on a memo that was informally submitted by a suggestion from our city engineer, and so the issue was dropped by the county. Now we have widening to six lanes in both sides of Villa Park, and I almost feel certain that the county will once again demand the park to match the, the, the street configuration on either end of our city. Now, I don't know which committee of council will have to deal with that, if that should arise, but I have a feeling it will become an issue, even though the bottleneck that will ensue, and does today ensue on traffic, is not caused by Villa Park. It's caused because of the entrance to the freeway and the signal light entrance rather than a continuous flow on ramp, which could have been cured when they designed that. So the feeling here is, what committee would you assign this issue to, should it come to the city? Wouldn't it be Traffic and Safety?
Well, when the issue does come up, and when it does come up, we will address it at that time. But right now, there's no committee. There is no council-appointed Traffic Committee. At some point, the council dropped it.
Yeah, I understand what's happened, but I'm thinking-
When that issue does come up-
But you'll have to decide who you send then, right?
Well, I don't think we can make that decision now.
No, I wouldn't think so now either.
Yeah, and, and that will be addressed, whether it's by committee, whether it's by council, but certainly-
I just wonder when Traffic and Safety issues come forth, you are representatives, you need representatives on those ad hoc committees or whatever. So the purpose of the committee seems reasonable, since safety is your number one concern for residents.
Right. And we do have a Community and Development Safety Committee. We have that.
Yes. Is that what that committee does?
That Community Development Department was determined in January.
Effectively does, does the same thing here. And also, I think that at some point, I mean, to your, your finer point about the six lanes, I, I agree with you totally, Wayne. And I think we can even have a resolution or whatever we need to have to make sure that Villa Park Road stays as such.
I think it's imperative that we-
And I, I don't know if we're doing it. Do we have someone that, Jared?
Yeah, we do. We did that.
Because I know that this came up with the LAFCO movement, too, like two different occasions in the 20 years I've been here.
Yeah, that's right. Anyway, you're, you're doing fine.
But your comment, your comment was, is welcomed, and-
Thank you.
We do have that addressed currently right now.
Mayor, also, it's identified in the staff report that many of the activities of the Traffic Safety Committee mirrored the duties of the Law Enforcement Advisory Committee. So I think we're covered.
Yeah, that's-
I'm, I'm going to move that we eliminate the committee.
Second?
And I, I'm closing public comment.
Yeah, we've, we've jumped the gun there, Bill.
That's okay.
We jumped the gun.
That's right. I closed it. We have a motion. We're good.
In a second.
Councilman Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Proten Mills?
Yes.
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Barnett?
Yes.
Mayor Fasenelli?
Yes.
Carries 5-0. On to the, the Fourth Amendment, which has to do with the preparation of all ordinances. The code currently reads that all ordinances shall be prepared by the city attorney, and it is recommended to include city staff as well, just to reflect the city's current practice. Another one of those cleanup items.
What have we been doing?
City staff and city attorney.
I mean, in the end, it comes, comes from Megadog anyway, right?
Comes from the city attorney's office.
Okay.
I, I thought what you were saying is that sometimes the city staff prepares the resolutions.
But the city attorney reviews it and approves it, basically.
Correct.
Right, yeah.
Are you going to take the public? I have a suggestion, a really simple suggestion to resolve it, but you want to go to-
Let me open up public comment. Does anyone have any discussion in public? I seeing none. Close public comment.
But I, I have what I think is a very simple suggestion that should sort of resolve it. Why don't we just change the language to prepared or reviewed by council? So either council prepares it, or they review it, but either way, either way, it's going through council.
Legal council.
Yeah, yeah, council. Prepared or reviewed by council. That, that leaves you totally flexible, and you're mandated to have council review.
Well, let me ask this. We got laid on, on the city attorney contract. Doesn't it have that information in the city attorney contract that they're supposed to review resolutions?
Correct.
So this would just be redundant.
We already got it. We're cleaning it up. Prepared or reviewed by-
Okay.
Makes no difference to me.
Yeah, prepared or reviewed. It's simple, clean.
Nothing's going to change on a daily basis here by this language.
Yeah, I think this is truly, Mayor, this is just a cleanup.
I, I understand. I think we've spent probably 10 minutes longer than we should on this.
Right, I, I agree.
That's all I was trying to get, to be simple language. Three words.
Well, I'll move it.
Prepared or reviewed.
Move it as is or with the new language?
Move it with the new language.
It's effectively the same thing, right?
Yep.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mayor Fasenelli?
Yes.
Mayor Proten Mills?
Yes.
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Barnett?
Yep.
Councilman Nelson?
Yes.
Carries 5-0.
All right, and I know that we did have a request to move the Wander Green Belt Project Update Number 12, but I-
Excuse me.
If I may.
Don't, don't we need to do the resolution?
So now what I'll do is take the ordinance and what will, will, let me pull it up on my screen. What I'm going to delete is Section 2 out of the ordinance, which-
We have to officially do the whole batch.
Which has to do with rules of debate. So the motion on the floor would be to approve the first reading of Ordinance Number 2015 595, set November 17th, 2015, as second reading and adoption.
And you'll have to adjust the last one for, for Mr. Barnett's-
With the new language as well.
With the new language.
We're moving Section 2 with rules of debate and adjusting the new language with all ordinances shall be prepared or reviewed by the city attorney.
And I'll move approval of the revised resolution.
Second.
Is there a second reading of this?
There is.
Next meeting.
There is. All right, okay.
Okay, we're good.
Let me read the title real quick. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Villa Park mending several sections of Villa Park Municipal Code regarding rule, we're taking out the rules of debate, lapse of variance or conditional use permit, preparation of ordinances, and Traffic Safety Committee. Councilman Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Proten Mills?
Yes.
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Barnett?
Yes.
Mayor Fasenelli?
Yes.
Carries 5-0.
We have a, a lot of items that are on here, and I'm not going to recommend that we move item number 12 up. We have some big issues, our audit, as far as our legal. I know there was a request, but we have other issues that are just as important to the city. So we're going to go on to the consent calendar right now. And all items on the consent calendar are considered routine and are enacted by one motion approving the recommended action list on the agenda, and any member of the council or the staff or the public can pull an item from the consent calendar for discussion. So, do I have any items that the public or council would like to pull?
I'd like to pull item 12 for reserved for next meeting. Let's still talk about it today.
Item 12 is not on the consent calendar, sir. Thank you very much. Okay, four, Barnett, okay?
Nine.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, do I have a motion for the remaining?
I'll make, I'll second, I'll second.
A second for three, five, six, seven, and eight.
Okay. Mayor Proten Mills?
Yes.
Councilman Nelson?
Yes.
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Barnett?
Yes.
Mayor Fasenelli?
Yes. Okay, we're going to go to item number four that was pulled by Rick.
I pulled this for a kind of an odd reason. It's just more of a little bit of discussion. This, as I recall from my notes, is the capital improvement budget in here. I just kind of wanted to get a little picture update on the, on the Mesa improvement, where I recall we engaged someone to give us a, to give us some drawings and ideas and stuff on that street. I since then had some opposition, probably everybody got, concern from one of the adjacent homeowners about unnecessary and being detrimental and not a safety issue, blah, 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 blah. And it, it just caused me to think about something, and I just want to kind of toss it out there for consideration. Probably can't do anything on it tonight. Had, had there been any, because we're talking about widening the street, isn't that right?
Adding curbing gutters.
Essentially widening the street, yes.
Okay. My question would be, because I've driven it, and I think, I mean, it looks to me, just as a guy, periodic goes through, something ought to be done, it's really tight. Somebody's walking on that, way to get whacked. It's a, it's a, it's a really skinny street. There's no place to go up. But I'm just wondering, in light of the comments that I got from one of the neighbors, would it make any sense to consider, instead of per se widening the street, or at least widening it significantly, would it make sense to consider putting a, a sidewalk or even a trail along that street, which wasn't quite as costly or invasive, so that we have a place that would be a good spot for people to walk so it was safe, and maybe it would look better and disrupt the neighbors' lives, and maybe be less expensive? And I just thought it might be something to think about. I don't know if it was considered.
We're, we're still in the design element, meeting with the consultant on Monday, the second, to actually review some preliminary plans. They've surveyed the area, so now we've got to take a look at, actually, where are the property lines and what encroachments are we dealing with?
But is the idea ever, is, is there even any consideration being given to as an alternative to widening the street, which would be a major issue, to perhaps putting, you know, an aesthetic trail alongside it for walking, so that we don't have to do the major street construction, ease the concerns of at least one of the neighbors, and, and safeguard the residents, give them a path to walk on, and kind of leave the street alone and not upset the aesthetics up there? Just, I'm just-
Can I ask you something? We have, that hasn't, this is on here just as a status, because we had approved that. It hasn't come back to us yet.
Right, but I guess what I'm seeing is, we approved what I, I recall to have been, you know, a study to see about costs and the practicality of widening the street. I don't remember any discussion of, hey, maybe instead of widening the street, we should consider an aesthetic trail along the side for walking to get the people out of the street, so that maybe we don't need to widen the street.
Well, I think that when, when it comes back to us, that's when we need to make that discussion.
But, you know, if they're looking at it, it might be nice to have them come back with a consideration of, by the way, you could-
If I could end this right here, that's what part of the preliminary design is. So before we meet this up anymore, yes, we've looked at it, we'll consider it, we'll bring it back to council through a study session, and then we'll receive direction from you. Could go the full widening, or we go, you know, just a little bit, add a, a trail or a sidewalk, or whatever you want to see. But yes, it's been considered, and before any action occurs, council will have the opportunity to-
I, I agree with you.
I just put it on the record, then, that it would be nice to perhaps see that, because I would like to let the people in that area have some input, and if it saves us money, keeps the people safe, and makes it more aesthetically pleasing on the street, it's certainly something to consider.
Yeah, I think, yeah, you just brought it-
That's all I raised it for.
Come back a little-
So I'll move the item unless somebody else has some comments.
No.
Second.
This is a receiving pile. Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Bring them in, carries.
Nine. Councilman Colacott?
Yeah, I just had a, a quick question on that. This is a compensation, or, excuse me, a sales tax or transaction use records review contract. Does this, is it, I want to make sure that it's absolutely clear in the contract that this only relates to newfound sales tax revenue, not existing sales tax revenue that we already have secured? For example, we get our sales tax from Ralphs and so forth.
Correct. Correct. Only newfound is what we'll compensate the consultant for.
Okay, and generally, how's that determined? Whether it's new found or existing?
They find it.
Through the records, they find it, they buy it, and they'll have to prove to us how they identified it.
Okay.
We've done this.
Well, through the, through the records, we'll know.
Okay.
It's, and it's only 18 months of recovery as well, right?
Three years.
No, three years.
Isn't the recovery period, I thought they, I thought they only recouped the first 18 months of.
Oh, yes, the recovery is 18 months, six quarters, I believe.
Right, their fee is capped at 18 months recovery of newfound money only.
Yes.
Yes.
Right.
I, I, yeah, I had one question on it, too. You had something in it that says that auditors for three-year contracts then lie dominant for three years. Does that mean you, you have them to do it for three years, then you don't have them do it for three years? Or wouldn't we have them to do it every year since, since they get paid on a percentage basis? If they don't find anything, we don't pay them, do we?
Because they can go, they can revert back.
No, we still have an annual $2,000 fee.
Oh, we do?
Yeah, you do. You have a fee to be able to add to the computer.
I will tell you, Bill, that I was here when we made that decision the first time, and my recollection as to why we did it was because there was an annual cost.
Okay, yeah, I see it. I see it. I see it. I see it. I see the 2,000. I see it now. I get it now. I get it now. Okay, I get it now. I thought it, I thought it was just the 15%, but I see the 2,000.
Yeah.
If it was just a percentage basis, it makes sense to have.
Yeah, yeah, if it was just a percentage basis, I want to have it every year. I see the, I missed the second part.
2,000 adjusted by CPI also. There is an adjustment in there.
I get it.
Move this?
Yeah.
I move it?
Yes, you can.
I'll move that.
Second.
Voice vote?
This is resolution. So the motion would be to adopt resolution 2015-33-44. Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Barnett?
Yes.
Councilman Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Mills?
Yes.
Mayor Fessinelli?
Yes.
The motion carries.
All right, we're on to new business. Item number 10, update to agreement with Rutan and Tucker for provision of city attorney.
Yes, this is in a proposed update to the agreement with our attorney firm, Rutan and Tucker. Factually, the agreement doesn't change, no rates change, nothing substantially changes from the current agreement. All we're doing is providing more detail about the scopes of services. Everything covered under the foundation, not everything, most items covered under the foundation, the routine day-to-day services are covered under the retainer, and then everything else, disincorporation, legal restructuring, would be at a billable rate of $165 per hour. That was kind of the driving factor for taking a look at this attorney services agreement. The retainer hasn't changed since, I believe, 2013, and the fee is at $3,700 per month.
And who requested this agreement to have more detail?
It was Councilman Nelson, and then what we have is in a resolution that's been in place since, I believe, 2007, which also hasn't been updated. So that's what we brought forward.
Yeah, I requested this because it wasn't clear to me what was included in the retainer. And what they've done here is outline what's included in the retainer. So how do we know when they charge us for something, whether it's in the retainer or not? I think this clarifies what's in the retainer, and it also updates the city attorney and assistant of city attorney. This hasn't been looked at in years, and I thought those were two significant things that needed to be done. And it also clarified the work that's done for the foundation is included under the retainer, except for specialized services that they do for the foundation. So there's some things I felt needed clarification.
So do they have, you have separate agreement with the foundation for other charges? Because like last year, there were certainly a lot of legal issues with the foundation. So did the city pay for that?
The city pays for that and then reimburses the foundation.
The foundation reimburses the city.
Yes.
We know what you meant. We know what you meant.
So who determines, who determines what the foundation reimburses? Is that determined by the retainer agreement, or is that determined by the city manager? Is that determined by us? How do we?
Well, my understanding is that the foundation is included in the retainer.
Yeah.
Normal services to the foundation, including the retainer.
I think our attorneys will tell us when it goes outside the scope.
Anything that's specialized services, fine in here, that the foundation wants, they pay for it themselves. We'll pay for it, and they will reimburse us for it. It's $165 an hour.
Then the new agreement says as requested by the city council, so moving forward, it will be at the city council's.
It'd be at our discretion whether we want them to have specialized services or not. If we offer specialized services for them, then we'll authorize it.
So they have to get our permission first?
Yes.
I mean, that's important because, because we've now, if you've gone to that kind of detail, that's, that's an important change.
Thank you.
If the foundation has to request from the council to have specialized services, that's a change.
Well, the specialized services talk about like, things like reorganization and things. I think you'd certainly want to.
I'm just, I just want to bring up that fact. We get that detail, then it's changing, and the foundation should be made aware of that then.
I don't think it really changes it. You know, right now, the foundation has asked that we look at succeeding, and ultimately, that goes to the parent organization, the city council, to make a decision. So nothing changes with it. It's just spelling it out a little more clearly.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think this just memorializes a course of dealing we've already established. Rutan, in this case, frankly, I think has been very reasonable in the rates. I've seen some things they've done. We haven't been billed for a lot of things. The things that we're billed for, when I was looking at it, appeared reasonable. It merely memorializes our current course of dealing. However, I have to agree with Councilman Nelson. I think it probably is a good idea to memorialize it and have it documented, so I have to agree with him.
I'll tell you, that's dangerous, Rick, when you start agreeing with me.
I'm not disagreeing with you. I just want to make sure that everyone knows it's detailed.
Go home and look in the mirror, yeah. See if I went to watch a tape and see if I really said that.
I know, I know. I'm going to memorialize that. I do, I'm concerned with, I do have one concern with the contract. It's an evergreen contract, and I don't really believe in evergreen contracts. I think contracts should have a specific end date so that periodically you come back and look at these. We haven't looked at this for eight years because the previous one was the evergreen one, you know, and so nobody ever looks at it. I do love the rates that they've given us. I think they're very.
Yeah, let's not rock the boat.
Excellent, excellent rates.
So we better memorialize it so that they change their rates.
You know, frankly, why do we want, if it stays there at that rate unless they come to us for bridge to change it, I'm frankly happy to leave it there.
But even, even if it's evergreen, they're going to come back and ask for rates when they need a rate increase.
Todd assuredly, they're not asking for more money right now, so we're good.
The sheriff asks for it. It won't be an evergreen anymore, so.
But I, I don't believe you should have evergreen contracts. I believe you have contracts that come back to you periodically so that you can review.
Well, it'll come back if they want to increase the rates, and if it doesn't, I don't know that we want to see it.
We have an out anyway.
Yeah.
It just automatically rolls over unless we.
But you, but you, but you.
I hope they never bring it back.
You tend to ignore it then, is what you're saying.
You tend to, you tend to ignore it. I would, I would just say we should have maybe a four-year, five-year agreement.
Yeah, I think what you're getting at is that we should have a clause in there for it to end at a certain date so that it forces us to review it, to see if there is any need for an update, rather than waiting until we have a problem.
Yes.
Well, it's month to month. I mean, it's not, I mean.
I think we can just bring it up every year.
It's terminable at any time.
Terminable at any time.
Anytime. I mean, there's something in there. It says it.
If that's what you want to do, Bill, why don't we just have, why don't we just have city staff send it on an annual or some, or biannual review, if you want to just put it on to look at it?
But then just want to just have the contract to have it, come up for review periodically.
I like those terms. I don't really want it to lapse.
Okay, I'll move this.
I need to open a public comment. Is there anybody who'd like to speak on this issue in the public? Okay, seeing none, let's bring it back to council.
I'm going to, I'm going to move approval of the contract, which provision that it has a time limit on it, say four.
Greg moved, Greg moved first, so.
Well, I'm going to amend this motion.
I got to get a second, though, so.
I'll second it.
Okay.
I'm going to, I'm going to amend this motion to have a five-year agreement.
And I'll second.
Think about that one for a second.
Okay.
So we have a motion to second on the substitute motion to include a five-year term.
I think.
You have it.
You have a motion on what it is, isn't it?
Bob seconded it.
So what, are we taking first, the second?
The substitute goes first.
Substitute goes first?
Yeah.
Councilman Nelson?
Yes.
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Barnett?
No.
Mayor Protem Mills?
No.
Mayor Fessinelli?
No.
On the original motion, which is the proposed contract as it is, Mayor Protem Mills?
Yes.
Councilman Barnett?
Yes.
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Fessinelli?
Yes.
Carries five years.
All right, item number 11, physical year, 2014-2015, comprehensive annual financial report.
Mayor, if I could jump in, there's actually also a resolution to approve behind the contract for naming, I actually haven't been named the assistant city attorney in any official document, so this would do that.
Well, I'm glad that you brought that up. We want to make, we want to make sure that we make you official.
We want to make her official. This would be Resolution 2015-33-46, pointing the legal representatives of the city. I have a motion to second.
Yes, I have a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mayor Protem Mills?
Yes.
Mayor Fessinelli?
Yes.
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Barnett?
Yes.
Councilman Nelson?
Yes.
Now we can move on to 11.
All right, Megan, you're official.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now we believe you, right.
Did you get, did she get a plaque now? With her name on it? All right, so we're going to go now to 11, which is our annual financial report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. As you have before you the 2014-15 CAFER, and that is our annual audit, where we hire an independent auditing firm who goes through the, the government code, I mean, the, the GFOA guidelines on how to determine and how to properly report finances in government accounting. Two of the main issues that came up this year, or two major changes as we increased our, or added the GASB 68 and 74 for, 54 for our OPEB, and our pension liability. And basically, that is required by PERS, and will obviously get the government, GFOA, sorry, I have a headache tonight. I'm a little off. And what we are supposed to report is our major liabilities on the pension. And if you see, if you take the CAFER, which is obviously your thickest bound report, and if you go to page 14, you will see there's two new items on our liabilities, and that is our unfunded other post employment benefit liability, and that is the, the health retirement, the health costs for retired and employees. Once they leave, we pay a small portion of their health as a benefit. And so we had to get an actuary calculation for that, and that was, this is the first year that it's been included on our financial statements because it was deemed previously not material by the auditors. So obviously, once we got our valuation, it is material, as it has grown over the years. And also, the new addition is the net pension liability, and that is our PERS. That's our unfunded liability. So those are the two major, like, changes for the CAFER, that we do a comprehensive annual financial report versus just a basic financial report, to include more verbiage, to understand, like, tie numbers in, give you the management and discussion analysis to kind of say, this is what's gone on in the year, this is what we prepared for, these are things we didn't know about that affected, you know, our financials, how we stand. It's kind of, does a little more of a summary. It's not, not required to have a CAFER, and what we do is we do 90% of the work. There's about $1,000, maybe $1,200 worth of extra if we want to officially get a CAFER award. That would update all the stat tables in the back. So that's, that's why if you see all the footnotes in the back saying, we don't have this information, we did it in 2013, so, you know, it's, it's just kind of a placeholder. So if council chooses to go for the CAFER award, again, we're on board. There's just a few things that we need to change, and we'd have to, again, purchase the demographic information and statistical information, which most CAFERs are used for investment purposes. You know, if we're going to do some, like, invest, get our ratings for issuing bonds, obviously, our city doesn't do that. How is, it was a feather in our hat a few years back when that was important to make sure that we had a GFOA-approved CAFER. So having said that, the CAFER this year, we prepare it, auditors test every single one of our numbers, and do their substantive testing, and gave us a clean audit. The, we have a couple other attachments, as you see. The, the first one is our report on internal control over financial reporting and compliance and other matters based on an audit of financial statements performed in accordance with the government auditing standards. And that's where they take our internal controls and do a basic overview. You know, this is what we say we do. Are we following through? They test our controls, and they also make recommendations if we have areas that are weak, or we don't have a good compensation control to prevent fraud or to prevent any type of misstatement on our financials. So they do a, that's the first opinion in the attachment two. Now, attachment three is our GAN limit, which is, again, another requirement that we, we have to stay under our, the limitation that was, I think, 1986, I think, is when it was initiated. And again, their opinion is to state, they go through and they recalculate our calculation to verify that we've done it properly. Again, there's no, no comments there, no findings there. And then the last attachment that you have is the report on communication with those charged with governance. And I believe SaaS 114 is the governance for this report, and I believe all of you were notified saying if you have any areas of concern, or if there's anything that you want looked at, a little more scrutinized, you have that opportunity to speak with the auditors, being the governing board of our city. And so basically, what they do is they go through, and there's some key areas that they have to, they let you know as a governing board, you know, do we have issues with management? Is there problems with difficulties performing the audit? And so they go through each of these areas, and as you can see, again, there's, there's no, no areas that, that they found that would, you know, cause a misstatement or anything to be concerned of. The, they gave us an, in one management comment, which is fairly normal, this was just in our cafeteria plan, or our member payments for health insurance, in that we had a couple that weren't paid at the right time, and it was nominal, and we, we have a policy now that we've stated with our invoicing that we bill it on the 25th or the first business day, close to the 25th of the prior month for the next month's health insurance. And if it's not paid by the 10th, then we've stated that we will, they'll lose that service. So that's the benefit, and that's the plan that we've implemented. We've corresponded, or let everybody know about that through our invoicing. And if you have any questions, I'm, I'm here.
I have a question when it comes to that. I brought it to the city manager, and I can only give you this, the city of Aliso Viejo was audited by the IRS, and the IRS determined that the council were deemed employees. And I would like, I know that's not in here, but it's something that's been troubling me now for a couple of years, and I'd like to get finally an answer why their council people are treated as employees. And that, that comes back to their pension benefits, comes back to health benefits, and they were, yeah, they were required to give a portion of money into a pension benefit. So that's not addressed in here, and I'd like to know what the difference is between our city and that particular, and there might be more cities. I just happen to know that particular.
So your, your question is why you are not an employee?
I'd like to know why one city's council people are considered employees and.
Some, some of them are, some attorneys are city, are city employees.
They're not, they're, they're not.
They're not, they're contracted?
They're, the council is not. So it's something, it's not something that we can address at this point. But after reading this, I was just looking to see with the new accountants, had they, if they were going to mention anything like that, and they did it. So it's, it's something that I think would be important to clear up.
Because they get some type of a stipend from the city?
I don't, I don't have the answer. I think it's something that we, because a lot of council people get stipends.
Right.
And not all of them are considered employees, so.
Not all the city council?
Yeah.
They, according to IRS code, they are considered employees.
Well, of course.
It says all elected and appointed officials are employees.
One more time?
That's what the IRS code says.
Says?
All elected and appointed officials are employees of the agency.
Megan?
Jared and I were just talking about, we, we looked at this before. We were trying to, I think we have an answer to your question.
Well, Bill just told me something new.
But, yeah.
I haven't heard that. That's, that's what I've been waiting to hear. So I don't think that we can discuss that here. I'd like that to come back, because I was waiting for that with the new accountants to see if.
If they would say that.
If they would say that and address that. And it happened, so it's not a trick, but I think it's something that we need to address.
But that appointed does not, does not apply to council, because council is really contracted.
I meant council.
I just polled Aliso Viejo, and there's, the city council receives a monthly stipend of $520 a month, which is why they're considered an employee. If you receive a monthly stipend, you're an employee.
Yeah, if you.
I've asked this question so many times, and I haven't gotten an answer.
If you don't get any money, IRS is not concerned about it.
I would go with that, too, but I'd like to find out if that's the answer. There are a lot of councils that get stipends, and they're not considered employees. So what's the difference?
I'll look at it and get back to you.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
I had a couple of comments on this, ma'am. Say, had 90% of the CAFER, if we're not going for the award, I don't see why we do all the work to do the 90%. Why not just present just, just the audit? Because we do less work, and it's a lot of stuff for me to read, you know, I'd rather.
Would you like to read it?
No, I'm not, I'm not that, 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 I'd like to see a lot less. If, I'd like to see just the, you know, just the audit. If you're not going to do the full CAFER and get the award for it, then why do the 90% of the work? Just present us with the audit.
What do you think, Michelle?
It's honestly, it's, it's more information, and there's summary. You lose your MDNA, you lose your transmittal letter, you lose a lot of, you're going to just have the opinion and numbers. And that's, I mean, if that's what council wants.
I thought, I thought management discussion analysis went with the audit.
That's part of the government, that's part of the CAFER.
I thought it's also part of the audit. Other audits I've seen always have management discussion analysis with it. All of.
Right. I mean, it's, it's.
I mean, all of them I've seen have management discussion analysis, but don't have all this other stuff. And I just, just wondered, if we have limited resources, why do we do 90% and not get anything? Just do the audit with the management discussion analysis.
Is there any advantage for us to do it that way? I mean, as far as.
No, that's what I was stating, is that it is something that council previously, it was very important to have, because you get a distinguishment, you know, it's.
It's a certificate.
If we, if we.
Certificate.
If we're going to go for the certificate, I'm saying, go for the certificate, go all the way.
All the way, I, yeah.
Right, but if we're not going to go for the certificate, it's, why do the work?
In my opinion, it's not worth it to go for the certificate.
Is there anything with raising bonds or something like that, and if it won't affect anything like that?
We, we have a policy for no borrowing, I believe.
Yes.
Anyway.
Right, so we won't need it for any, right, for, right. My other comment is that I understand the budget and finance reviewed this, reviewed it. And in my opinion, if they reviewed the audit, it could have gone on the consent calendar here.
But we don't do, I think we don't do that to give the, to give the, it's a big item for us, and we just give you the opportunity. We could have went on the consent calendar, and then you could have pulled it.
I mean, if we have the budget and finance committee reviewed it, it's a clean audit.
It's a clean audit, but it's just.
If there were issues, I think.
We don't, well, we don't have to discuss it. You could just move it.
But then, that's the same thing as putting it on the consent calendar.
There is a comment I think we should probably make on it. As I recall, we decided to have staff look into expanding the audit a little bit this year to include Ian Colonel Controls as well as the general.
We didn't put that on, we didn't put it on the agenda this time.
We didn't do that.
We didn't put it on the agenda. It didn't get put on.
Where do we end up with that?
It just didn't get put on the agenda.
It, it says in there, they make no, they make no opinion on.[1771.54]
No, 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 no. We had a discussion to change it and to have, to have that happen. It did not make it on the agenda for the council to discuss that and to vote on it.
The finance committee.
You can bring it up in the comments later.
Expanding the scope of the audit to inter, to include internal control. And I think staff was going to get some numbers on it and.
Then we'll put it back on the agenda and ask.
But then that, that would be for the next audit, not this one.
You know, I thought frankly, it was, so it was going to be contemplated to be inexpensive enough that essentially they were going to do it, is my recollection. So I'm a little confused.
They don't, they don't just do it.
Yeah, no, you have to, it's a separate contract to ask for an internal control. And you can have that done at any time, but that's a, that's a separate agreement. Because that's, we, we just asked for a, what is required, you know, the three reports that are required that we have to, or four reports that we have to submit and have as a government entity. We, that's not a required audit.
I understand at the, at the, at the.
We requested it. I don't think she's got, she hasn't done anything with it yet.
Yeah, you requested it, but it is not a deadline that has.
It's only been.
It's only been a week.
It's only been a week.
I thought we were going to request it now while they were kind of in the midst, it might be more cost efficient later this year. We, we signed an agreement with this, the audit from three years, I believe.
We'll, we'll look at including it with a future audit.
Oh, I understand.
Between now and the future audit.
That's how I understood it also, but she has not made that phone call yet.
Rick, you can, you can have them to do it anytime. It's a separate agreement. You'll have to bring it before the council to authorize it to do the contract to do a separate audit.
I, I understand at least the part about the separate agreement, but the discussion was at the meeting was we would like to see a number and would like to see it applied to this year because they're just in the finishing of the audit. And it might be, because it was so simple and they could, and they already reviewed enough of the internal control items that we thought it might be very cost efficient to get a bid on the internal control for this audit.
That's correct.
And that's where I recall we left.
That's correct. That is correct.
And I was following up on that.
And they haven't, it's only been a week.
We need, we need time for that.
It's only been a week, so she hasn't done it.
Well, we save any money if we go back to the.
That is exactly how I perceived it also.
And I, that was just kind of, it was kind of, it was kind of a report to council.
I don't know because.
Well.
We'll have to look at the agreement.
But I assume we would.
I'd have to look at the agreement.
And is it significant? I mean, we're already going ninety percent, so I agree with Bill. If we don't need that, then.
We, that's something that we can discuss in the future. Right now, we're still unfortunately talking about this year's audit. So if we want to talk about a future audit, we'll have to Brown Act, agendize it for a future meeting.
Well, we can, we don't need a Brown Act issue for, and I don't think we do. Do we need a Brown Act issue for, for the, for the finance committee to ask you guys to get a number?
Well, we already did that and she'll, she'll come back to it, the finance, and then we'll put it on the agenda.
They can, they can, they can do that. You can do that. You can ask them for a number.
I'd like to see the number for this year because I think it might be efficient. And so the rest of the council knows, because I've been on finance for a while, we've never had, since I've been around, an internal control audit and every one of them explicitly excludes it. I understand it's not that expensive and it seems to me from a wisdom perspective, if not real expensive, we should at least get an internal control audit.
You can, you can, you can ask for that, certainly.
Yeah.
That was.
But back, back to this, as I said, I think that in the future, we should have just an audit. We shouldn't do the extra work to get ninety percent unless we're going to go a hundred percent.
Maybe we could do that periodically.
Right. And I, I think it could go on a consent calendar. If you recall, last year, it was on the consent calendar. I complained because it was on the consent calendar and the budget and finance committee had not. I did. But, but, but I, I did that because the budget and finance committee had not reviewed it and it was on the consent calendar. I think as long as the budget and finance committee reviewed it, it's a clean audit that it could go on a consent calendar.
Okay.
My two cents.
Okay. I'd like to open it up to public comment.
I would, I also have comments.
Okay, I'm, I, anybody here for public comment? Excuse me, Bob, I'm sorry, just because I spoke first. And no one? Okay, I'm closing public comment. Councilman Colacott.
Okay. The October nineteenth transmital letter, though it's addressed to the city of Villa Park, describes that the audit report was prepared for the city of Lomita.
Yeah, I saw that.
Now, where, where's Lomita? Is that in LA County or something?
LA, yes, it's near Torrance.
Anyway, that, I think that does not make me feel very confident in the audit. This is, that's pretty sloppy work. Secondly, the report on communication with those charged with governance is dated June thirtieth, which is a full, was it two months before the start of the audit? So how can the findings be summarized when they hadn't even done the, didn't start the audit for two months later?
What page are you on?
On cover of this dated June thirtieth.
That's where the fiscal year ended.
Yeah.
That's where the fiscal year ended, June thirtieth, because that's what they audited?
It doesn't say fiscal ended, year ended, it just says June, dated June thirtieth.
Right. And if you look at their opinion, it's dated October nineteenth, because that's what they're opining on. So this is staying that this is, on June, for the June thirtieth fiscal year, they was asked about, the governing board was asked, what areas do you want to be looked at on top of our, like, you know, routine audit? What, where do you want to hone in on, on this fiscal year, where were your concerns? And that's what this is reporting on.
Okay. Then if you could ask them to resend this letter and refer to the city of Villa Park, if this is really what it's for. It's the document entitled Independent Accountant's Report on Agreed Upon Procedures Applied to Appropriations for Work Sheets.
Yeah, I see it. I see it. It was just, yeah. Good catch.
And just to clarify that the dates, the dates are proper on the, on it. We just had the typo here on the city, the dates that Councilman Colacott's were proper.
Okay. I'd also like to talk about Exhibit A. And for this discussion, I'd like the mayor to recuse herself as we'll be talking about financial matters that she is personally involved with.
What's Exhibit A?
Exhibit A, General Recommendations, Cafeteria Plan Member Payments.
Oh, for attachment number four. Someone tell me where I'm looking. The very last page.
And you want me to recuse myself?
Yes, please.
No.
Okay. The council, I'd like you to look in, give your opinion about whether she should recuse herself and that we're going to be discussing late payments for medical insurance coverage.
Sorry, just a second, I'm catching up here on.
Okay.
Would it be an appropriate time to take a restroom break while council looks into this?
I agree, Rick. You and I agree.
So I can break her on it. We, we didn't have any more. It's only fair to give them a few hours.
Okay, we're in recess.
Take a break.
We're in recess for fifteen minutes.
I wouldn't do that anyway. Moment to catch up on what is being discussed. The specific matter that, attachment for Exhibit A, is a specific finding of the auditors and there's actually no governmental decision by the council related to this matter. This is an auditor's determination, not the council's determination. So the council won't be taking action on this finding. In order to have a conflict of interest, one of the, one of the requirements is that council take an action. So I don't see the conflict here. Now, I would say that if the council wants to have a larger discussion of medical, of cafeteria policies or medical payments, can certainly do so, but the agendized item is CAFRA and this is an attachment to CAFRA. So the conversation for Brown Act purposes has to be limited to this, this particular exhibit. Like I said, it can certainly be agendized for a future meeting if the council wants to have a broader discussion on that policy. So I don't see specifically here, because there's no governmental decision to be made, I don't see a conflict of interest.
So where were we?
Okay. Well, let me ask some questions of staff then. First of all, could you describe with, you know, so that the residents understand what we're talking about? What is the cafeteria plan member payments all about?
Cafeteria plan member payments is, has to do with, with council members, current and past. If you've served on the Villa Park City Council, you're eligible to purchase medical insurance through the city. Prior to nineteen ninety-five, six, you receive a stipend of about a hundred and twenty dollars per month. Since, if you've served on council since nineteen ninety-five, you, you pay on a hundred percent pay-as-you-go basis. So the cafeteria plan member payments has to do with council members and their purchasing of health and through, insurance through the city.
The finding states that during our test work on the city's cafeteria plan, we noted that two members were a few months late in reimbursing the city for their medical payments. It should be noted as the date of this letter, all medical payment reimbursements have been paid and were up to date. How many months late? You know, what are we talking about here? I've been hearing about information about this for months now. So what's, but it was very downplayed in Michelle's comments. Really, what are we talking about here?
Two to three months late.
Two to three months. For what period of time? How long was this? How long did this go on?
One individual in particular has historically been two to three months late. The other is more recent.
Okay. For this current year since November, what are we talking about?
I'm not.
How much late?
Two to three months late.
Okay. But it's been a consistent, I have a copy of invoice to Mayor Fasenelli for February, March, April, May, June, and another one for March, April, and May. It seems like this has been a recurring thing and it's, it appears to me that somebody's been allowing the use of the city treasury to cover personal medical payments. Ultimately, you know, they were, the city was paid back, but the city carried this. Do we have a city policy allowing that?
We do have a city policy, well, no, not, not allowing that. We have a policy in place now to prevent it.
Okay, but why did it continue on so long without notifying the city council members to let us know that what was going on?
Because we've always been pretty loose here in Villa Park and we've always.
We've always been pretty loose with the city treasury?
With regards to medical insurance payments for past council members, yes.
So we let their, we, the city treasury, we allow the city treasury to be used for covering private medical payments, premiums, and that's okay? Or that was okay?
Because we were reimbursed ultimately, yes.
Who, who, were there, there were late pay, payment penalties imposed? Were there ever medical penalties that were excused?
Yes.
Okay. Who excused them and under what authority?
The city manager, I did, and under my authority. The goal is to be reimbursed.
Yes. But once a penalty is assessed, do you have authority?
Yes, as the city manager.
Okay. Could you provide that authority at the next meeting?
I don't believe we have it anywhere in writing, but as a, as a city manager, I, I excuse the penalties because we were ultimately reimbursed.
Okay, I know we have a, a policy for imposing penalties, but not a policy for allowing for the city manager or anybody else to, once a penalty's been imposed, basically give away or waive a city asset.
I will, I will, I will take a look and if we have something in place, I'll provide it to you.
Okay, and if we don't?
I will let you know.
Okay. I understand that you've done what, I know when I pay my insurance premiums or when I have medical, whether it's medical coverage, auto insurance, homeowner's insurance, if I'm late on making a policy premium, my insurance is automatically canceled. That's typical practice, right? I'm sure that's what you feel, have and Michelle, you have as well and all the rest of us. If we don't make our payments actually on the, the date that it's due, they just cancel the policy. You know, our policy should, I believe for the city, should be the same. It's no different than any other way of doing business. I'm pleased to see that you've imposed a city manager policy that prevents, or that says that if you don't make your payment by, within fifteen days of the due date, you're automatically canceled. But I think that still leaves the city staff in a conflict position with a, a city council person because you still have discretion, you could still waive it. And what I'd like is to request is that since we do have had a problem with this in the past, that we have a, we bring back to council a city council policy so that it's no longer, you don't have to worry about the discretion, you don't have to worry about putting yourself in between doing the right thing and, you know, and requiring payment of, you know, or cancellation of policies and, you know, covering the city's, properly managing the city's treasury. If somebody needs to, in the policy, if somebody does need to, because of some peculiar circumstance, you know, a death of a family member or whatever else, if they need to come back, they can come back to city council and I'm sure the city council would be very gracious and supporting. But just non-payment, you know, it's, I don't think that the residents of our city want our treasury to be freely accessed by anybody in the city, whether it's a city councilman or any other resident. So anyway, in reviewing Exhibit A of the, of the audit report, that raised a red flag. It confirmed rumors and, that I've been hearing for some months now. And I hope, you know, that we don't see this occur again.
Absolutely. You know, this is benefit provided to the council members by the city council. So if you want a policy, I'm happy to write one for you guys and if you approve it, you approve it.
Okay, well, the, the policy, the advantage, what's provided is the opportunity to purchase in a pass-through manner at a no cost to the city and basically no, no impact whatsoever, including a loan, however temporary.
I have a question. You heard rumors on this. There were two people that were on here. Who is the, since you were so bold to bring up my name and you obviously don't know what you're talking about.
Well.
There is another member that was on, what is the name of that person?
That was late?
Yes.
Councilman Seldrini, past councilman Seldrini.
And I certainly apologize for the members of the public that are here, but historically we have had people were late to the city. And one of them is sitting in this room and that is Dr. Hilton. And if you're going to bring up laundry to just smear my name, which you're not doing because I paid my late fees, this city got in excess of two thousand dollars if I remember correctly. All right, so my, your treasury did very, did better than the Orange County. So, Dr. Hilton, excuse me, historically, three, four months now, I have a question for the council. I, I have documents in here and I'd like to know if you copied any of my personal documents with my family members' ID numbers, social security numbers, or anything else? Because it appears you've heard rumors. So have you taken any personnel documents out of this office that have to do with myself?
I don't have any of your documents. I haven't seen your personnel documents.
Then how did you find out? Which is completely open, thank you very much. Same how I asked. When I got on council, I asked.
Okay.
And I got an answer.
Well, and I think that all of the documents, the requests for payment and so forth are public documents.
Correct. Did you request them?
And I suggest that, I'd like to request that staff post those so that they're freely available to the public so that they can review the documents and make their own determination whether, you know.
Are you out of your mind?
No.
And you want to sit up here?
Are you, are you, are you interrupting me?
I am.
I have the floor, ma'am.
I am, and I'm the mayor, and I just took it back.
Okay.
Does this have anything to do with the item that is on the agenda?
It has to do with the finding of the audit.
Excuse me, I'm asking council.
The, the, the item on the agenda notes that two members were.
So, we, we concluded those two members are Mr. Sorjuci and Diana Fasenelli. There you go.
Well, you know, this is all non-productive.
This is very non-productive, but we had to be, we had to be dealt with it, and that is the two members.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Can we move on?
You finished?
I did request that we have, bring back a policy for consideration by council at our next meeting.
We got that.
I think a policy is a place to know, isn't it, Jerry?
I thought we have a policy. We approved it.
It's an internal policy. By myself, the city manager, what Councilman Colacott was requesting was a city council policy.
Yeah.
You know, why does everything have to be so formal in this case when it was all taken care of? I don't get it, but, anyway.
He wants to bring the policy back, this is right, so let's move on.
Of course it is.
Let's move on.
Are we done? All right, I, um.
Oh, we got to make a motion on, on, I guess to.
On the capra.
Receive, receive, receiving file? Is it receiving file?
Receiving pop.
I'll move to receiving file, the 90% capra.
I'll write it that way, too. Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
All right, we are on item 12, Wanda Green Belt project update.
I have one guy left, I believe.
You know, I will pass this over to the public, Community Development Public Safety Committee.
Yes, we worked with, let's see, we selected a consultant, an architectural consultant to draft up a proposed redesign of the green belt as specified in our fiscal 15, 16 budget. We interviewed several architectural firms, selected one, and they drafted up a proposed design, and that was presented at a public meeting about two weeks ago. That was attended by a number of people, I didn't count them, but the room was fairly full. The, the comments were pretty much against the project. What they wanted to see was, they did not want to see additional usage of the area on the green belt. Others wanted to see the money spent for other public, public needs. But we felt that there's a, there was a need for some improvement of the Wanda Green Belt area, and one of the objectives of the project was to conserve water. So what we did is we went back and talked with the Toronto Water District to see how could we achieve that, that objective? And what they recommended was to follow the same recommendation that they've given to all the residents, is that we retrofit all of our sprinkler systems, our sprinkler heads with the water conserv, conserving heads. Currently, we have a 1980's technology sprinkler heads. Also that we put our sprinkler system on a timer rather than manually operated by our maintenance staff, which should save staff time as well as water. We made some other, we looked at that, made a, a recommendation for an alternative to also expand the area, to also include the area on the east side of, or I guess it is of the, the wall, and the area south of Lincoln Street and north of Collins. There are a number of dead trees in the area, so those dead trees, I think, are already scheduled to be removed, but since that's part of a 30-year-old project, we'd like to see the trees replaced. Anyway, what we're recommending is that we go back, work with Tropical Plaza or some other contractor to find out how much all this would cost, and also identify how much of a water savings we would achieve through that alternative, and compare that against the water conservation, the water, reduced water usage that we'd receive with the landscape architects proposal, and bring that back to council with a recommendation. Is that about captured, Dave, or Bill?
Yes, we, we took the proposal to the community hearing on October 14, and we really got hammered. I mean, really got hammered. There was only, there was only one person at the meeting that spoke in favor of it. Everyone said, you know, why are you spending all this money on this? You know, we like it the way it is. We don't like, we don't, we don't like a park here, because we live in Villa Park, we have parks in our backyard, we don't want to be attracting people here, you know? And if you, they say if you put something out there, the people's going to use it, it's people from Orange across the street, those are the ones going to be using it. They don't, they don't want places where vagrants can stop and rest there. So we really got hammered. So we said, well then, let's look at another alternative. If, if our goal is to save water, let's see how much water we can save by making the current system more efficient for probably less cost. The designers gave us a cost of what water would be with their design, I think it was about $6,000 a year. So we said, how, can we get close to that number, you know, but spend a lot less money by making the current one more efficient and please the residents? In particular, other residents that were there were the ones that lived right next, right next to it, and they, they didn't like it at all. So that's what we proposed, and we asked the council, can the committee select a vendor to give us an estimate of whatever it costs to automate the system, to upgrade the sprinklers, you know, to replace the dead trees, and to get a irrigation specifically for the trees? You know, come back to the council with that and say, well, here's what it costs, here's the water savings compared to what it is for the current proposal we have, to see if it makes sense to go ahead with the initial proposal, does it make sense for the alternative proposal? And we don't know how much it will cost for, you know, to develop this, because we haven't gotten any bids on it, but I can't think it costs more than $4,000 or $5,000. We also want to have the city manager to have our current contractor to stop work on their current project, you know, until we make a decision. So we could save some money there. The total contract, I think, was about $32,000. I know we've paid them $10,000 already, I don't know how much we actually owe them.
You mean the consultant?
Yeah, the consultant, the design firm that we have.
And so the design firm couldn't come up with only a $6,000 a year savings out of everything?
That, that's, that's what, that's, that's the number they gave us, how much water would take with their design.
But I, this project wasn't just about water savings. I mean, it's kind of, you know, we have, we also need to update it, like we, you know, we put new facing on our home, we want to update it so the community can use it. I heard, I heard you say, I know the people that were here are people that normally don't even come to the council meeting, and those people, there were about 20 people, maybe 12, 14 homes represented. And some of those people don't come to the council meetings, and the last time they came to one, it was when we were discussing the gas station property, which at that point, those same people were against that, and now we have a fence around there. So I think that we spent this money that I'd like, I'd like to see what the architect came up with. I haven't seen it.
Oh, we, we have the information, but my point is, if you have a community forum to get community input, then we got community input.
You only got 20 people here.
It doesn't matter how many people, that was the community input.
But I, but I had positive.
We, we got, we got nothing but negative input except for one person. In addition to that, Jared has, many emails he got from other residents that opposed it as well.
Well, I.
We got, we got one person that had a positive feedback about it. What, what, what the people told us is there, that they don't want it, that it was very clear.
I'm going to.
I mean, we, we really got beat up on it. They asked us, why do we even spend the money to get a design firm? Why didn't you come to us before?
I'm going to read you an email that came from a resident that he asked me to read it out loud.
Okay.
He did, so I, I wouldn't have done it unless he specifically did.
Okay, that's fine.
And I heard this, and I heard you say you did have some residents tell you, oh, the people from Orange are going to use it, so, and that's what ties this into it. Unfortunately, this is from a Mr. Joseph Barca who lives on Jerome Street. Unfortunately, due to other business, I was unable to attend the October 14 meeting to provide my input to the Green Belt project. We do not need space to, quote, "walk around." We have mostly half acres, beautiful and well-maintained homes and gardens, and this project will only attract outside people and undesirables. Where do people park? I don't know what the cost is, but it's a waste of taxpayers' money. Are we getting this, getting like the state and federal legislators who spend the money because it's there? Where's the rationale? The drought's not going to last forever, and the area will return to beautiful green grass. I'm against this project, and I ask that this email be read out loud at the next meeting. I, I heard you say that the residents there, who, the 20 that came here, somebody said they didn't like, want the people from Orange to come here. I read this. Five of us are here, we haven't seen the, the documents. It was not a two-town forum where we could go. If it was a two-town forum, all five of us would be here. I was kind of surprised that it wasn't. And I think that we, the amount of money that we spent, I think it needs to come back to council first and take a look at it. And at that point, give the opportunity for the people who have contacted myself and on social media who have liked the project. Because we need to update the city, not just necessarily with sprinkler heads, but to make it look nice. Anaheim has done it, all the way down Santa Ana Canyon Road, you know? We can't keep the same things. We need to have our property values go up, and you need to update it. So after spending $20,000, let the whole council see what the guy did.
Well, the full council can see what they did. First of all, the full council can't come to the meeting. You can come to any committee meeting that you want to, you just can't participate. You could come there and hear the city, the people's comments.
But we wanted, it was a town forum, and in the past, town forums in Villa Park have included the council. And this did not, and it was not to have them televised either.
Well, first, well, first of all, the, the staff wrote up the comments that you have in your package there. That, that really reflects what went on there.
With the 20, with 20 people there.
It doesn't matter what the amount is.
It doesn't.
You have a forum for the public, and the public that shows up is the ones interested.
So let's give them another opportunity to come out.
We talk about property values, some of the people that live next to it said, it believed that it devalues their property.
Yeah.
To have that next to it. They specifically said that.
Right, and I, and that made, I believe, I give them that opinion.
First of all, we, we were in the committee, we did the work, this is our recommendation, the council can do what they please with it, but if you, if you go another way, you're going to be going against the wishes, I believe in most people in the city, and they're going to say that you, you, you ask our input and you, you don't do anything with it.
I'd like to give.
And that's part of the feedback we got at the, at the hearing is that.
We got that kind of feedback, that private councils have not listened to them.
Yeah.
To the community.
Well, I'd like.
Jared, we have a copy of the mock-up here in City Hall, don't we?
Correct, there should be one included with the agenda packet, and I believe I emailed this to you in some of my weekly meetings.
That's sent here.
Okay, well, I would like to move to have a town forum. One that is a true town forum, like the city always had with the council, with note cards, and they asked questions, and they saw it.
Should we get public comment before we get into our big battle?
Well, let's have public comment, sure.
Public comment.
I think you're making a, Wayne Selsell again. You have my address. This was an information meeting, gathering information to form a report to council. I was at, in attendance, and I sat through the whole thing. It was done in a very good way. Jared was very professional in his presentation, and each of the committee members spoke to the group. Everyone was organized, there was a few people got a little loud, there always are, you know? But basically, it was, it was down to about two or three people who come here and speak loud. So it was a very thoughtful meeting in terms of, hey, we're concerned too about the drought, and the number of $27,000 was the estimated cost for the water that, for just that two acre strip, 2.19 acres, I think it is. Well, I have a lot of a half acre, and if, if you take out the sidewalks and the, and the house itself, the footprints, I, I tried to do some math thinking, well, I'll give you the benefit of the doubt, but two acres, I'm paying about 100 and 1/4 under the new drought policy a month for my water, so four times a half acre is two acres. So do your math, and you'll see, wow, $27,000 for two acres, a little over two acres? Yeah, you got a water problem. And I think this could be cured. And two and a half blocks away is the water district from this site. I'm sure Steve or Jerry would come down and, and assess it for you for nothing. And the cost, I did the same thing. I have 13 zones in my yard, I put 109, 111, I think it is, maybe 113, new sprinkler heads on. Total cost, $1,500. I put a timer that has a monthly, or has a daily weather report, it turns it on when it needs water. When we went into drought, I had them cut it back to two days a week, 15 minutes. And, you know, trees get their water way down deep. Surface water that you're putting 15 minutes a day, twice a week, ain't going to do anything for the trees, but my trees are thriving. Shock to me, so is my ground cover. Drive by, you have my address. The only thing I lost was turf, because I put some new plantings in and didn't water them often enough till it got settled. And you have a lovely, you don't live very far from me, Diana, so I, you know what I, your yard looks nice, and I'm sure you've cut back on your water, too, but $27,000 should have been a red flag right there. Do that first, solve the main issue of the water problem. Now beautification, that's in the eye of the beholder. When I was on council, when we put, took the old right-of-way out and scraped the boron dirt off and the gravel, and the curb was a string of used telephone poles down the asphalt, and that was the way we, when we moved here 40-some years ago, it was an eyesore. So what we did, we decided we had to do something with it. Well, while we were deciding that nothing would grow on the boron-treated soil, Bill Morrow, who was superintendent, while we were talking about it for a year and a half, he went down and planted some trees. Well, it's, darn things grew, and I think I mentioned this to you a month or so ago. Well, we, we got encouraged and put a little topsoil on top of it and, and put those sidewalks in, but we did it in a way to keep the children away from the, from the traffic, that's why they're running along the back, pretty much. And it's, it's simply a corridor for people to, that go to the schools. For us to put a plantings in there and so forth to cause people to linger would create a park setting, but it isn't wide enough to be safe for sports or, so it's really essentially an acceptable pathway. Now, you have budgeted, I believe, $300,000 for this project, and you, that's a lot of money that we're going to need next year, asphalt starts breaking up after we get the rains, which we haven't had for so many years. When that all gets down there and gets through the cracks, you're going to find, we're going to need that money to fix streets. In fact, we've got some right now that I could drive you to, that could spend at least $50,000 of that dollars that needs to be done before the rains. But, you know, that's your business.
Thank you.
Point is, it was an open meeting, and I thought it was a very good, mannerly meeting. And to criticize the committee that you have appointed or elected to represent your committee for this project, I think you ought to work as a team and not question them, but accept the input, and by all means, accept the input from the residents who stood there and spoke about it. We don't need beautification for the benefit of people outside our city. We need the money for our own city and the public improvements that will be called upon in the structural and farm drains. So my attitude is, it was a good meeting, we took two and a half hours, and you got good input, read your committee report.
Thank you.
Act on it.
Any other public comment?
Hi.
Hi. You've been sitting back there all quiet, thank you for coming.
Well, I have, this, this is my first time, I'm a relatively new, I'm General Berry, retired from the United States Air Force, and very nice of you to appear, Councilman. For me, this is a major change from going from years of federal regulations, and now I'm down on the real people and find out what goes on in the real town.
Welcome down here.
So it's, it's very interesting, I could tell many stories about that. I also live on Adams Ranch Road, so I'm over in that other side. And I've been around a little bit of the discussion, so I'd just like to, if you can, is it okay to second one of your fellow citizens, because I'd like to second what he said.
Yes, of course.
I'd like to second what he said. I did the math also on the cutback, and I don't have a half acre, but I have about a third of an acre, and, and, you know, if you talk to the water board here, they say about, you know, 80, 85% of our water is going for landscaping, and so it wasn't all that difficult, in all honesty, to really cut back to make the 36% gold. He would go do that, and, and the same technique he uses, I use, 2 o'clock, 3 o'clock, 4 o'clock, come on for 5 minutes, you know? Yeah, I'm losing a little bit of grass, but that's okay. The trees, as he points out, they, they're not going to, that's not making any difference, they get their water from down below, and I lost some plants, but we've got a beautiful facility over there, which I think is, is really good, and what, from a, if you just take my government, my military background, if I can defer money, you know, that's money in the bank to me from my upbringing, because it's precious, and, and we're going to get some water, you know, the NEMO's coming and all that sort of good stuff, and so, you know, I, I. And so, you know, I, I think that my recommendation, my thought process is, is do exactly what was discussed. The water board, the water, the surrounding water district here, and the town people that work here for the city, you know, I think they can go out and, and make sure we got the right sprinkling heads there, we, we got the right timers on there, and I think we'll see a significant change in the cost of water that was reported to do, that just sounds, something's really broken if we're spending that kind of money on the water. I think all our numbers say we can get it down to a wrong number, and I would recommend that you consider doing that for the time being. Put the three hundred thousand dollars in the bank for what may come up next year, because it should start raining in November, and we wanna do beautification, I think you can delay that too, and, and see what this winter brings, and see what we really need the money for at this stage of the game. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
We didn't get together on that. No, I didn't hurry speaks.
Public comment.
In fact, I just met her.
Did you? All right, public comment is closed, we'll bring it back to council.
Just what I wanna say, with, the, the committee wasn't recommending to not do the project, that wasn't what we recommended. We recommend to look at an alternative and come with the alternative, so then you can compare the alternative versus the project and see which one makes the most sense. That's what we, we're not saying to not do the project, we're just saying, we think there may be a cheap alternative, we wanna look at the alternative, spend a few dollars to look at the alternative and bring the alternative back and look, how much water does it save versus, how much water does a project save?
Yeah, under other alternative, you're gonna have to revise the sprinklers, the irrigation system. If we implemented the, the proposal from the architect, we'd have to basically rip out all of our existing irrigation system and start afresh, but it would also require timers and valves, which we currently don't have. Currently, it's, the, uh, Wanda Green Belt is, uh, turned on and off manually by our maintenance staff, and that's something that came out, it was one of the good pieces of information that came out from the public meeting. And, you know, what we're proposing here is to look at, to also just retrofitting what we've got and putting in some electronic valves and a timer that could be, uh, like the one that Wayne has, connected with the satellite so that it adjusts for the climatic conditions. Yeah.
I have, uh, I guess I'm glad that the, I, that we had this meeting. Of course, I didn't come, I was told I shouldn't come, so I didn't, and it wasn't on television. But anyway, that's the way it worked out this time. But I'm, I'm happy, I'm disappointed in the firm we hired, this was one of the first things that they would recommend, that they would just leave it as it is and just save the water from the sprinklers. I'm surprised that that, that didn't come out right away. That should have been something that would, would have been an immediate thing to look at, because the, the big thing we were trying to do was to save money on water, correct? And we were trying to also beautify it as well, we all, and we all agreed upon that. I, I know that.
I think they were consistent with the scope of work, Greg. You know, 'cause we were, we were looking at initially going in is, okay, what if we replace the turf with drought-tolerant shrubs and so forth?
Plants and things like that, yeah.
And that's, I think that's what they did. I think they, but it looked to me like, from what they were proposing, that the cost to do all that wasn't really a good return, the way it turned out. And that's why we had them do it, 'cause we have, we have to go outside and get these kind of engineering firms, which is fine. And also, we have to, since we're a general law city, we have to pay a full rate on everything that happens there too. But I was surprised, like you, to learn that we manually turn those on and off, and I'm sure one of the costs that's, that's probably pretty high is trying to get electricity over there and all around.
About half of it's automated?
Yeah.
Electricity's one of the, especially on the south end, top of Lincoln.
Other than that, I mean, I, I think it's pretty clear from a lot of the residents, I mean, it's okay the way it is, and the general, I'm, I'm hope, I'm, I think he's got a good, I, a good vent on this, that let's keep it, save some money right now and we can do some things later. I, but the trees being replaced, I don't know, Bob, are, are they in positions where we need to replace the trees? They're dead anyway, right?
Well, um.
'Cause those are expensive too.
Why replace them?
Yeah, that's why I'm asking, why replace them?
Why replace trees? If you're not gonna do a beautification project, which is what this started out as, this wasn't a, um, let's say, water, it was beautification.
And try to.
And I, and I think they've worked really hard, the commit, they have met, the committee's met many times.
Many times, yeah.
They've worked it, so, you know, to throw something away, this wasn't just about saving water.
But that was the original impetus, was, was saving water too, I believe.
Yeah.
My, my understanding, I thought the whole thing was about saving water, that we had a program for doing some of these places where we put drought-resistant, drought-tolerant landscaping in to save water. I thought the whole idea was to save water.
Like the little islands, like the little islands.
Right, the little islands.
Rid of the turf.
I thought the whole thing, but I, I, I wanna ask the legal counsel question, you talked about you were told not to come to the meeting. Can't other council members come to the meeting as long as they don't participate?
Yeah, yeah, short answer is yes.
They can come to any committee meeting or any open house that they're not on the committee, as long as they don't participate.
When there are two council members on the committee and both council members are present, another council member can come and sit in the audience, but don't, yeah, so long as there's no participation, we don't walk into a Brown Act problem.
Right.
But this wasn't called a committee meeting, it was called a town forum.
Well, it, is the same thing for a town forum?
Essentially, yes.
Yes.
And, and, forgive me, I, I told council not to come, because I wanted it to be an informal meeting, which is why it wasn't televised, it wasn't conducive to television. People were freely talking in the audience.
I wish they had all been there to hear the comments, how badly we got beat up on. You know, we're trying to defend the project, you know, we got, we got hammered.
Well.
We got really hammered.
It, it's a good thing there wasn't rope around.
Right.
Yes.
Throwing you under the bus.
I wouldn't be here.
I mean, Jared, Jared, Jared got hammered, you ask him, he'll tell you, he, he got hammered.
Yeah, he got hammered the worst.
He got, he got hammered the worst. I, I really felt sorry for him, you know, the way, way they treated him there, they fucked him all up.
But, you know, I don't mind, that's part of the job, and, and that's the reason we held this meeting, we needed community input. We got the input, our job is to do the greatest good for the greatest number, and I believe the masses in, in, you know, this aspect have at least both.
Yeah. I guess there was, there was a lot of misinformation too, I mean, or, or interpreted.
There was some propaganda in the community where, you know, a wall was gonna come down, we tried to correct as much of it as possible, but, I mean, you can't prevent that.
Yeah.
It's gonna happen.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't envy you guys being there, actually, so.
I wish you'd have been there so you could have taken some of the use as well.
So where, where are we at this, what do we need to do?
Well, what, what, what the committee is, what the committee is asking, for the council authorizes, the higher vendor to look at this alternative, to cost out this alternative, tell us what it costs, and tell us how much water it will save, or what the water users would be. And then we can compare that versus the project we currently have.
Sure.
How much is the contract that we have right now with our architect?
It's, it's thirty-two thousand dollars, isn't it?
The design contract was thirty-two thousand, I believe we've spent around.
We spent around ten thousand.
Ten, eleven, twelve thousand?
We put a plate on my hold for right.
But I, we, essentially, we've told them pens down for the time being.
But do we owe them anymore? If we stop work on it right now with them, do we, how much do we owe them, thirty-two thousand?
I've asked them, no, not thirty-two thousand.
No.
They have certain milestones which are to meet, it's, it's only gonna be a couple thousand more, not much.
Yeah, okay.
A significant portion of that comes from the actual preparation of construction documents, not the design. The, the, the design is essentially done.
Yeah, they, they've done the design, what I wanna do is try to save money there, and if we use some of that money to do this alternative, and if we decide not to go forward with that, then we, we, it really hasn't cost us anymore.
And, and the other firm that we would want, we would be turning to, it'd be someplace like, or a firm like Tropical Plaza, where they would actually, actually cost out replacing sprinkler heads and cost out putting a, a timer in and all the, getting electrical connection and so forth.
Do we, do we have a map of the piping over there? Wayne, do we have a map of piping?
Mike Knowleshead.
Well, we could, we could, we could get, we could get that done too, but what we
wanna do is just do that, bring it back to the council.
All right.
Here's an alternative, compare the two, and the council can make the decision which alternative they wanna use.
Is there any special funds that we have to use for this, anything special? This is all general fund money?
It's all general fund, we're not obligated to any grants or any federal.
Some of the things we have are, like Mesa.
Correct.
Okay, yes, okay. What do we do, we bring this back?
Well, um.
Move it?
I'm on, I'm gonna move the, the committee's recommendation.
I'll second.
I'd like to, I have, I've been sitting back waiting to make a comment, so I'd like to go two cents in for you. Um, you know, I remember this being kind of water motivated, but I do remember some discussion of aesthetics, and we have been cleaning the city up a bit. Does anybody know what the estimated cost was for the project that was on paper that I saw something on?
We don't have, we don't have that.
We haven't penciled out those numbers, all we've done is allocate three hundred thousand, one fifty in this budget, one fifty in the next. We, we, we weren't at that phase yet to where they would bid it out per the unit price.
We hear any numbers, anybody got any idea of the range at all?
Yeah, so, I mean, it could, it could be.
I thought the, I thought the design firm was gonna give us a, a cost estimate.
It was part of it, but we just, we hadn't reached that milestone of the design project yet.
I mean, because frankly, what I, what I'd like to see, I'm typically in the middle on this council for whatever reason, but, I mean, I like the idea, you know, it's obvious there's some resistance, and the resistance is from the people in the area, so it's hard to ignore that. And we do need the money, we just got popped with a million-dollar contingency, we may have issues of breakage if this ground gets wet and the clay changes, so, you know, I've, I've always been frugal, that, that the undesignated reserves have grown since I've been on this council. So I'm, I'm kinda cheap and frugal, so I don't wanna spend a lot of money, but, you know, I don't know what, I mean, we do need to clean it up down there, the water bill's ridiculous, I signed those checks for a long time. So at a minimum, we gotta clean it up, and I don't know what that's gonna cost. My thought is, if we do that, maybe there's a middle of the road here where we just put in a water-efficient irrigation system with the sensors and timers and cut the water bill way down. Maybe what we can do is leave it, you know, largely intact, maybe put some circles and put some rocks in there, you know, just so it decorates it up a little bit, doesn't draw any people in to hang out there, just make it look a little nicer, the place is a little dated, maybe we just clean it up with a few little rocks and just, just kinda decorate it a bit, put in the, the, you know, the drought-tolerant, water-efficient system, and get a number and see what that would cost, just because I have a feeling that it's not gonna be four or five thousand dollars to dig that stuff up and, and put in those controls and sensors, I think it's gonna be more than that. And I'm guessing that the cost of clean, just cleaning up the landscaping a little bit might really not be that much more than putting in that, that system. So what I would personally like to see is, I'd like to see Tropical or somebody take a run at it and say, yeah, we could put some little rock thing, we'll just clean it, make it a little nicer, cut some of the grass out when we do that, 'cause that's more, much more, you know, drought tolerant, and that would, should save us even more money, hopefully not cost as much. Modernize and make it a little, look a little cleaner and nicer and still not invite a lot of [BLEEP] and stuff, which is, appears to be what the neighbors are concerned about. And that might be a balance, so if I had my brothers here, I, I'd like to see whatever we already paid for come back and maybe have somebody give us an idea what the cost is, since we already kinda spent most of the money designing it, but I'd also like to see really more of what that area's asking for, which is, let's just clean up the water bill, get the efficiencies in, you know, and maybe we can take a little grass out and just decorate it, instead of having a big stretch of grass, we could have a little, little stone or something in there. So really not much different than what they're talking about. I would like to see those two come back to council so we can take a look at it, we get some public comment, too.
That, that's kinda what we're asking for, Rick.
But I'm there.
That's what we're asking for.
Okay.
You, you explained it better than we did, I guess.
How, how, how much money do we spend a year on water, just that area?
Up to twenty-seven thousand. I didn't hear anybody talking about tweaking it up a little bit, maybe taking some of the grass out.
No, you didn't. They did, yeah.
That was the only difference that you had was tweaking.
Because if you, if, if you guys stand.
I mean, we never have to, maybe, maybe it's a long time before we have to, we'll save a lot of money and still look at it.
If someone stands on Wanda and looks at the homes, the walls, because the walls are all different, you have a brick wall, you have a, you know, you have a, a wood wall, you have a pink wall over here. If I just take pictures of those, you would not believe that that would be Villa Park. It's dated, it's, I need some assistance. So we need, I think we have a responsibility to the city to put some sort of a landscaping, you know, we're not gonna ask people to put new walls up, because that's not what we do.
What, what, the, the walls that you're talking about belong to the residents.
And, and we're not.
Because that, that came up at the meeting, they, they asked, they came up at the meeting, and what the designer said they were gonna do, they were gonna put shrubbery up there to.
Right, so we can cover it.
Cover that, and we could, we could, we could do that a lot cheaper than doing the whole thing.
You know, things that need to be done there, 'cause if I just showed that, it does not look like.
We, we could, we could have that included in our estimate as well.
I agree with you, let's get an estimate, let's get an estimate what you had and then move on to what you are gonna do, and we can compare both.
My proposal would be that we just get a water resist, or a water, you know, efficient proposal with sensors, et cetera, cleaning up the landscape, somebody wants to put a little something to the walls or cover it up a little bit, some kind of landscape design, it's not, nothing real costly.
But I wanna compare it though.
Nothing to invite, make it a park or whatever, that and our old plan, and get some.
We don't want people coming in here.
Get some ballpark numbers and, and let's look at it, and next, that would be my.
I, I did make a motion, didn't I? I'm, I'm gonna revise my motion to include the, the committee's recommendation, plus looking at some shrubbery for the wall and Rick's little cleanup.
Clean it up a bit.
Clean up, clean up, clean up some of the rocks.
You're gonna compare the two, correct?
Second, second, bring it back.
Get some of that lawn out of it, get some of the water.
I wanna clarify though, you, that's what you, what you have now and then what you're gonna work on. We're gonna compare what the designer gave us to what you're gonna do.
Right, the alternative.
Okay, the alternative, 'cause we don't know how much the designers is, okay, thank you.
So there's some idea of range, of range of cost or something, so we have some idea what we're talking about.
Well, could, could we get, could we get the designers to give us a cost?
My guess is it's gonna exceed the three hundred thousand. We gave them three hundred to design off already.
I know, I know that, I know the cost's gonna be at least three hundred thousand, they, they notice how much money we have.
Yeah, I mean, if we can say the cost will be in excess of three hundred thousand, I mean, for me personally.
Really?
That's enough.
Well, I don't think, I can't see that.
Can, can you get that commitment?
I will get reasonable assurance from them, yes.
Get reasonable assurance.
I could waste way too much money.
I don't, that seems wrong.
Three hundred thousand or more.
It's, it's gonna, in my opinion, it's gonna exceed three hundred thousand. They're talking, we gave them the three hundred thousand dollar budget, and they're talking about phasing it over several years and several projects because of our three hundred thousand dollar budget.
So my, my guess is we're talking about maybe in the range of twenty-three thousand or something like that, I don't know.
I hope not much more.
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, if you just come back and, and confirm that this is probably a three hundred thousand dollar plus job, that's a good enough estimate for me, and And I don't know about...
It's good enough for me.
I will get confirmation...
Okay.
From them, but my, my gut is telling me it's going to well exceed 300,000.
Or even a range, even a range of price.
There's a lot of soil, a lot of work, a, a lot of movement in preparation over there.
Lot of labor.
And total replacement of the irrigation system and...
Even, even, and Wayne Salzell will know, what's, I, I believe we backfilled it with about three inches of topsoil. What's underneath that topsoil once we start scraping away? Old, you know, railroad right away with chemicals and whatever.
We have a motion?
Well, second.
Yeah, we have a motion.
We have a motion and we have a second.
He's seconded it already.
I second it, Bill. Have you already did it?
Yeah, we already got a second.
Okay.
And I second it before then.
Okay.
Everybody second it, so we'll... A voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? During that?
Okay. One more.
We are on, um, item 13, Mayor, and Councilmember Matters. Councilmember requested matter, Colacut, consideration of a resolution congratulating Councilman Bill Nelson on his election as president of the California Special Districts Association. Councilman Colacut?
Yes, well, as I announced at the last, our last council meeting, Bill Nelson was elected as the president of the California Special Districts Association. So a, a similar organization that we're probably more familiar with is the League of Cities. It's kind of equivalent to being elected the president of the League of Cities. So it's a, it's a very prestigious achievement. Councilman Nelson has been involved with a number of civic activities, including serving on the grand... And he's currently a member of the Calif, or the Orange County Cemetery District, which is where he came from to, to get his current post as president of the California Special Districts Association. Anyway, to recognize one of our fellow councilmen for this great achievement, I'm recommending that we give him a commendation on his election to recognize him. So, anyway, also move?
I'm going to open up public comment.
I, I really appreciate your opening up for public comment. Fortunately, in our town, we can afford to do this and still get through the evening before midnight, but I'll be brief. Not always. I think, I came here tonight specifically for this purpose, to congratulate Bill. I think, Bill, you didn't need to put any signs up to run for office in this town because you've been involved in our community in many ways, from the foundation to the, to the... I didn't know you were in the cemetery district. I haven't gotten to that point in life yet, so...
We waiting for you.
I think some people would like to put me there sooner.
Sooner than later.
But basically, Bill, it is a great accomplishment. When I was on council for years, the League of Cities was in favor at that time and the dominant force. And for you to be involved in the greater community, Villa Park is the smallest city in the county and we need the help of our friends and neighbors across the line, even though it's the transients we were worried about here from, that might come from across the way. We still try to set a model example of how a city can be operated with very few tax dollars from, from commercial and retail and so forth. So you, you've served us well. And at your position, you will be able to solicit help when we have issues that we need it, need a vote from them to accomplish. So being involved in the greater community prevents us from being acted upon. It permits us to not be outvoted or talked down to because of our size. And I encourage all the rest of the council as a model of, of how to, how to get the most for Villa Park from, from the rest of the county is to cooperate with them when they have needs and build friendships and link relationships, just as you've demonstrated by this. So, Bill, my congratulations to you and I hope fully support a resolution that would honor you for this. Great accomplishment. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne.
I'd like to add a word. Dr. Robert Helton, 5895 East Mountain Loop Trail, Anaheim. Resident of Villa Park for 42 years. I, I also want to congratulate you, Bill. You've accomplished behind the scenes what we've strived for. Being a small city, we have to look to our neighbors and the rest of the state to help protect us. And I think this is a great thing and congratulate you sincerely.
Thank you, but, Doctor.
Okay, we'll close public comment. Bring it back to the council.
Well, I've made a motion to adopt the resolution. No second?
I'll second.
The vote, motion on the table, let me go back to my staff report, just so I can get the resolution number, is to approve resolution number 2015-3345.
Now, before we do this, since it's not going to a vote, I, I feel like I probably should say something here. I would like to commend Bill as well for, for taking the time, making the offer and serving on that board. And I'd like to congratulate him on being elected to that board. That said, my vote's going to not, I'm, I'm not going to be voting for it. And the reason that I'm not going to be voting for it is because I just don't want to start down the road. To me, it's political and I just don't want to start down the road of giving ourselves proclamations, et cetera, et cetera, whether it's me or anybody else. So I want, I just want to make that statement to Bill. I do appreciate and commend you for doing that. I know we all have boards and committees and stuff we're serving on. Some of us have time, some of us don't have time to do some of the, the activities in them. We all do it and I just see it as being part of the council activity here. Your own political interests, et cetera, may drive what you do or don't want to do. I really don't, as council member, want to get involved and throw in ourselves proclamations back and forth. And for that reason, I'm going to vote, I'm going to vote against it. But I do want to make a commendation because I, I share the comments that were made to you by the speaker. It's more of a policy issue to me. It has nothing to do with you. And if the proclamation or resolution were me, I'd vote the same way. So, anyway, with that said...
Yeah, I, I have a little different bent on that. It's just that you just got elected and usually when we have proclamations typically are, this is a resolution, which is different as a proclamation than, than a proclamation. It's usually at the end of when you've done that type of service. And as Rick just mentioned, I mean, we all are on lots of different things. And yes, this is an accomplishment and I commend you for it. You've done a lot of work. You've been on the cemetery board for what, 13 years now?
Mm-hmm.
As I recall, and also done a lot of other work with the special districts up through the vice presidency and everything else and other directorships, et cetera. But as Rick echoed, like, I'm trying to echo for Rick, is that I don't think we should be doing it for each other. We usually do it for other people, not on the council. And, and we rarely do resolutions. We do proclamations typically when three council people bring it to the, the, the city manager and the council, which we do a lot of, we do that, you know, for accomplishments after they've completed what they're doing. So that's the only reason I'm voting against it too, tonight.
Okay, Jared, take, take the vote, Jim?
Motion on the floor is to adopt resolution number 2015-3345. Councilman Colacut?
Yes.
Councilman Nelson?
I'm going to stay.
Councilman Burnett?
No.
Mayor for Ten Mills?
No.
Mayor for Estana?
No.
The motion fails.
All right, we're going to go to item 14, individual councilmember information items and required meeting reports. Councilman Colacut?
Nothing to report.
Okay, Councilman Nelson? Councilman Nelson, anything to report individually?
No.
No, okay. Burnett?
You know, we don't have anything to report either.
Okay.
The only thing I have to report tonight is that there was several meetings of the Sanitation District. And one was a breakfast that Bob and I both went to a couple of weeks ago. And we had a planning session last week for our five-year plan, which is a rolling two, three-year plan. And then tomorrow night I have the usual general board meeting for the Sanitation District. And of course, at the vector control, there was a lot of talk about the mosquitoes. You've seen it all over the newspapers. I'm really happy to see that a lot of, of work has been done with the newspapers and it's, it's getting out because there's a lot of danger out there that we, we actually do have around the whole area. And other than that, that's about all I have for tonight.
All right, I'd like to certainly make an announcement here. We have a proclamation from our city declaring November 13th World Pancreatic Cancer Day in the city of Villa Park. This is something that we've, the city has done for years and we certainly recognize that, that is a horrible disease and hopefully one day that this will also be eradicated. I, in the last 30 days, I have traveled up to San Jose and went to the League of California Cities Conference. During that time, went to several symposiums that were very beneficial. One of them being on animal control, which I will report on next month pertaining directly to us. One of them was on privacy and how we come up with a policy for the city for public records that people request. And I went to that symposium and what they suggested that we do is that we have a policy. In speaking with Jared, we do have one, but it hasn't been looked at in quite some time. And it's something that I've asked him to review, so that was stressed very heavily. When it comes to what's coming up, we have a Halloween fest on Friday. It's on the 30th. It runs from four to seven, if I remember correctly, or 4:30 to 7:30. We're going to have thousands of people, the majority of them coming from Orange and Anaheim. So I certainly hope that everyone is pleasant to them and greets them coming in here because they spend their money coming from across the way and I certainly welcome them into this city. In addition, Serrano Elementary has a carnival on the same day. That was just by mistake that that happened, so we have a lot of activities going on in the streets, so please be careful when you're driving around. Other than that, I'm going to turn it over to Jared. You have any news for us?
Nothing.
Okay, council? Okay, well, thank you. We're adjourned and until the next month. Thank you very much.
Michelle, I'd like to thank Michelle for taking the time to put this together. For, for those of you that got this and may not know where it came from...